The clock hour has arrived. I'm going to call this session to order. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Marshawn.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Vlad.
Thank you, Connie. The mayor is at an unavoidable personal meeting this morning, so I'll be taking over this meeting and running it until he arrives. If our first two items are complete and he is here, I'll turn the dais over. If we get to agenda item number four, the budget amendments, I'm going to skip that one if he is not here, move on to other items so he can be here to participate in that discussion. So with that, agenda item number two is the Historic Preservation Commission update. Representatives from the Historic Preservation Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations. We have staff and members of the HPC here. If you'd please identify yourself and talk to us.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm Jim Englesee, long-range planner and historic preservation liaison. And we have today Marty Vazcar, our Historic Preservation Commission chair, and he'll be giving you the update today.
Thank you, members of the council. I'd like to give you a kind of a, I shouldn't say brief, update. It's pretty extensive, actually, of what has taken place in the HPC at the moment. Starting with number one, our recent accomplishments. We've continued design reviews of exterior alterations in the downtown Pocatello Historic District. In fiscal year 2023, seven applications of Certificate of Appropriateness, COA, have been reviewed by the commission compared to eight applications reviewed in fiscal year 2022. COAs that the commission reviewed this year include some of the following: signage for Gate City Coffee and Caribou Jack, a new mural at Lookout Point, facade alterations allowing access to Leadership Park from 234 North Main Street, a memorial plaque for commemorating the location of the First Ward Chapel, and facade alterations to the Yellowstone Hotel. In coordination with a consultant, we have completed the three-phase reconnaissance study of the Bonneville neighborhood. In a future grant cycle, we will pursue the possibility of listing the neighborhood as a historic district on the National Register of Historic Places. And in coordination with a consultant, we are continuing our project to overhaul the downtown historic district design standards. These new standards will provide a more objective review and streamlined process for COAs. The council will be presented a draft of these new standards in the upcoming work session. We continue our effort to provide the public opportunities to learn more about our city's history. As part of our responsibility as a commission, we continually seek new opportunities to increase our efforts to educate the public on the importance of historic preservation, as well as the significance of the city's history. This year, one education, our education component has included a walking tour of the ISU quad and surrounding buildings, a presentation by Arlen Walker regarding the city's red light district history, and a tour of ISU's special collections. Moving on to item two, current or upcoming projects. The city has been awarded a $15,000 grant as part of the Certified Local Government, CLG, program to overhaul the city's historic preservation plan. This plan update is supported by the city's comprehensive plan and will lay the foundation of the HPC's priorities, as well as what activities the city will seek grants for as part of the yearly request within the CLG grant program. While the grant has been awarded, the state Historic Preservation Office is still waiting on the National Park Service to have the funds available to initiate the project. The Brady Chapel Centennial Campaign continues. Enough funds have been secured for the city to initiate Phase One of the restoration of the chapel. This includes the repointing and resealing of the chapel's masonry, as well as the installation of the chapel's pinnacles. This restoration work is tentatively set to begin in the spring of 2024. Fundraising and grant efforts continue to be ongoing until we can raise enough funds to completely restore the historic structure. Fundraising events will continue to be coordinated by the Friends of the Brady Chapel. That one specifically, I'm super excited to see. That's been in the works for so long, and to see it finally moving forward, it's good stuff. We are continuing our efforts to coordinate with city staff and property owners on protecting the city's historic assets. These assets play a critical role in the identity of Pocatello. We are continually looking for opportunities to coordinate with historic downtown Pocatello on projects to improve and promote the downtown Pocatello Historic District. We are also continuing our partnership with Relight the Night Committee to restore and relight historic neon sign displays in the historic district. We are passionate about the preservation of our city's history and want to ensure that this important endeavor is clearly understood by the community and that access to information is simplified for property owners and preservationists in Pocatello. We want to be a resource for everyone who desires to protect and preserve the city's history, as well as the significant cultural and economic value these historic buildings and places provide. Thank you for this opportunity for the Historic Preservation Commission to provide an update on our continued efforts to preserve the history, culture, and identity of Pocatello. We would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Jim, do you have anything to add?
No.
Counselor? Counselor Woodburn?
I don't, man? I don't have any questions, but I also, I'm glad you brought up the Brady Chapel. I'm really excited to see that moving forward and to have Phase One get going. So I wanted to thank you all for your work on that and working with Friends of the Brady Chapel to get that accomplished. The other thing I wanted to comment on, and I'm just really pleased to see you all doing, is the outreach to the community and particularly the property owners and business owners downtown, and really kind of building that relationship and helping people understand what HPC does and what historic preservation is and what the value of it is, and just all the efforts you've made to sort of help that understanding and build those relationships. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Mangum.
Great work that you guys are doing in the community. What has been the community response?
It kind of depends. For the most part, some of our outreach that we've had, so for example, Arlen Walker's red light district was fairly well-attended. Others have not been as well-attended by the community. I do believe that we could maybe advertise more. I know being as a city entity here, maybe our advertisement for those things is not as great as it could be. Maybe we could be advertising in the paper or something. I would love to see more participation for it. I think it gives our community a venue, basically, to express their thoughts, concerns, and learn a little bit more. The more activity we can have in those outreach moments, the better, in my opinion. They are incredibly enlightening for myself as a member of the HPC. I feel like I'm fairly well-versed in the history of Pocatello, but every event I attend, I learn a significant amount more. So it is, it's kind of eye-opening, actually.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let me ask your question. Over the years I've served on the council, there's been a lot of friction between HPC and the businesses in the downtown area. Do you, is it your perspective that we're getting over that, that we're working better together?
I would definitely say we're working better together. I think there is still a gap to be bridged. I believe we are moving in the right direction, though. I think with this design standard update and the community outreach that we're doing, I think we're putting ourselves in a better position to reach the individuals who are most impacted by this. And I think if we continue on the trajectory that we are, I think we will be in a much better place in the future, once the design standards have been updated. And we'll really kind of make sure that they're included in this process, that their thoughts, their opinions, the things that they value most are really being taken into consideration. I wouldn't say our relationship with business owners is perfect at the moment, but we're definitely moving in a much more amenable direction.
Is that your opinion, the same thing, Jim?
I would agree. I mean, there's always, there was always room for improvement and better outreach, but we're moving in the right direction, in my opinion, and we're changing things with the design standards and with related code unto those standards that I believe is for the better.
Do we have members, downtown business owners, property owners, on the HPC?
Yes, we have a few of them, actually. Dennis, Jim's Young.
Mm-hmm.
I think those are them, too, at the moment, actually. Previously, Josh Pullman was a business owner in downtown Pocatello, however he is now located on Yellowstone.
Are meetings well-attended?
By the public?
No, by the commission.
By the commission.
They could be better considerably.
I thank you. To follow up on our president, Cheatham's question, so what is the general nature of the friction that might exist between the HPC and the business people?
There's kind of a fine line that we walk when we talk historic preservation, but also allowing business owners the grace of adding their own personality to their business. We want to maintain this integrity of the building as it is, but give them the flexibility to express themselves and their business. It's been a condition of the past that we were very strict upon maintaining that integrity almost above all else. And so it felt as though it was maybe a little backwards, I would say, a little bit, that we weren't letting the business owners be involved as much as we were telling them what needed to happen and not letting them be a part of that decision. And in trying to bridge that gap, we want them to be more involved. We want to maintain the historic integrity of buildings, but also make sure that these business owners are being involved and taking pride in what they're doing. I mean, if you're just handed something and saying, hey, this is where you're going to be, you can't modify this in any way, it takes away a lot of the pride that you have in what you do and where you're at. And so trying to make sure that we're involving them in that and giving them the flexibility to do what they want while still maintaining the standard set by the Secretary of, oh my gosh.
The Interior.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, is find a good way to balance the two of them. Give business owners the opportunity to grow, do what they would like, express themselves, but also maintaining that preservation.
If I can add to that a little bit, essentially, when you boil it all down two ways for historic preservation, you can treat it as a time capsule, or you can preserve what matters most. And we're taking the preserve what matters most. And that, what that really means is, those standards from the Secretary of the Interior, what materials define the historic character, the historic identity of a building, and protecting those instead of pretending like we live in the 1800s and trying to preserve that. And so really preserving the integrity of the architecture, the style, while bringing it up-to-date to today's standards is what our approach is going to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Do existing building standards, things like fire code and those things, significantly impact the HPC and what you're trying to do?
A lot of what we deal with is aesthetics. Now, building code specifically, if we're talking about, say, like egress from a building can alter the face of a building. Predominantly, though, we're looking at materials being used on the exterior if we're covering or removing something. So the building code itself, maybe not so much. We definitely want to make sure that a building is safe. If it's crumbling, it needs to be updated to make sure that that's not, that it doesn't become a safety issue. But it is predominantly on the exterior of buildings where we might not see a significant impact from code updates.
And that's an issue mostly with the property owners. They struggle with the building code a little bit more than the HPC ever does.
Absolutely.
And just to clarify, the restrictions only apply to the exterior of the building. Is that correct? Nothing inside, except for maybe an egress door or something like that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lurk?
And I would just add, a good example is our windows and like what materials you would use for windows. You know, if you have a historic building and then you put, you know, vinyl windows on it, that's an issue of what historic preservation deals with, just making sure that the materials fit with the integrity, the historic integrity of the building. Signs are another thing, primary thing that HPC deals with, that the signs are not like you might see on Yellowstone, that they sort of keep with the historic nature of the downtown area.
Anything else, counsel? Any final thoughts?
I was going to ask, actually. I know previously we had had a liaison for the HPC, and I was curious if that was something that with our design standards updates and potentially even the way that our HPC meetings are working in the future, if that was still going to be a, we will not have a liaison. There have been times where having council input had been, would have been very beneficial. And granted, we have to wait until meetings to get a quorum to have any kind of input from council. Having a liaison would be very beneficial. I think it gives us an insight as to what takes place. I know for myself, I understand very well how the HPC functions, but there are definitely things that the council does and things that you address that I'm not privy to, so. Go ahead.
Council President, Cheatham.
You had made the comment about having a quorum, and it sounded as if you rarely have a quorum to have a meeting. Is that correct, or?
We have successfully had a quorum, though I won't lie. It's usually well after our meeting starts.
Okay.
We start, excuse me, starting until our, we have a quorum, which is after our scheduled start time.
Okay.
Counselor Lurk?
I just wanted to address your question. The reason for removing the liaison from the HPC had nothing to do with design standards or anything like that. The issue was that you make decisions, like for certificates of appropriateness, that if those are appealed, they come before us. And we, that's part of what we call our quasi-judicial role, where we're making, you know, a decision almost like a courtroom to decide an appeal. And in those cases, like planning and zoning is a similar situation. We don't have liaisons because then you have a council member who was sort of privy to information that the other council members don't have. That was the only reason, and therefore you most likely will not have a liaison going forward. But it's because of that role that we play in situations with appeals.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three is a Planning and Zoning Commission update. Representatives from the Planning and Zoning Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects, as well as council's policies and expectations. Thank you.
Do you have a copy? May I bring it?
Certainly. Bring it up to me and we'll pass it out, Kristi. If you'd take a seat and identify yourself, we'd appreciate it. And begin.
Good morning, counsel. Crystal Chanda, Chair of Planning and Zoning. I would like to start out with the current members on planning and zoning. Our commissioners include myself, Whitney Fenwick, who was voted in as vice chair last night, Eugene Bartu, Marjana Hewlett, Rich Phillips, and we also newly appointed Adam Guyer, who is replacing Shen Q. Ruh. From the period beginning of 17th, September 13th, 2022, to the 13th of '23, we reviewed seven preliminary plats. They were considered with a public hearing held and a decision rendered in comparison to the commission reviewed 11 the year before. We had three zone map amendments requests with findings and facts and recommendations provided to the council. We reviewed six the year before. Three annexation applications were reviewed with findings and facts and recommendations submitted to council. Five annexations were reviewed the year before. We had two comprehensive plan amendments were considered with public hearing and written recommendation provided to the council. The commission held three public hearings in consideration to the draft of our Valley Our Mission, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and associated maps. I'd also like to mention that the staff did a really great job going through some trainings with the commission on that and making sure we fully understood it. Particular thanks to Jim for that. And then also, I thought it was great that they did the, went out and had open houses where the publics could come and ask questions for that. Brett McLean, Planning and Development Director, and Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner, typically hold a training session with commission members every February or any time a refresher is needed. At last year's annual meeting, I had brought up a few observations I had noticed through the year that were maybe some small things that could use improvement, and I would just like this to stay, that the department and our liaisons took that into consideration. We had some great training throughout the year that helped us. Some of those public hearings that can be a little tricky, we had some legal representation there, and I think those things greatly helped the commission. Any questions?
Counselor?
When I, when I look at these statistics, granted, it's a small sample size, but you see seven, you know, 11 down to seven, six down to three, five down to three. Are there, what do you read, are those trends, what do you read into them? What does that mean in the broader spectrum in terms of, if anything? Or is it just sometimes we have a busy year, sometimes we don't?
I think there's a lot to read into it. I think I'm not the expert to give you those answers.
Okay.
I think it's things that people are seeing as a trend throughout the United States.
Okay.
I don't think it has anything to do with the commission or the city.
No, and I didn't imply as such, rather, I was wondering if it implied trends in housing development in other areas and that, and if you could speak to that, but appreciate.
Interest rates, costs of construction, I'm sure all of those things play a role in that.
When I look at the building permit report we get each month, we're running almost exactly half of the prior year, and I think this reflects that very well. You know, things are down, and, you know, I've heard from folks that we've got so many projects in the mill they can't do anymore right now. The architects are slammed, they're turning business around, they just literally cannot handle any more business right now with the staffing levels that construction companies and architects and engineering firms have. I'm sure you've had the same thing at your engineering company.
One of the preliminary plats that was on the agenda last night, we had a question, and he was like, well, I started this last fall and I'm just barely getting it here, so I need to double-check that because it's taking, and it's not because it took him that long, it's because he had that much backlog.
Yeah.
Any other questions, counsel? Counselor Lurk?
I would agree. Everything I'm hearing in the community, even for people wanting to do personal construction projects, is, I mean, cost of materials, availability of materials, availability of contractors, I mean, everybody's just booked up. It's really difficult. But the one comment I did want to make, too, is that I'm really glad that you were able to get the training for the members of the commission that you had wanted. I remember last year's presentation from you, and that was one of the concerns when, I mean, how do I say this? The Planning and Zoning Commission is not always the most popular board to be on because it's difficult and you have to make very difficult decisions and important decisions. And so giving the members the tools that they need to do that job, those who are willing to step up and do it, to help and support them is a really good thing. So thanks for making that happen, and thank you to our staff for doing that.
And just to be clear, I think the largest part of that was defining roles.
Yes.
What we should and should not be considering when we're making decisions.
Yes.
So it was great.
Thanks.
Are you getting quarums? Are your meetings regularly attended by everyone?
We, with exception to myself this summer, are, I feel like we have really good attendance. I got stuck on a job out of state and was gone all summer, and the rest of the commission was great about filling in and making sure that there was a quorum and things were covered. I think that it's very well-attended, and everybody who is on the commission takes ownership for their roles.
Good. How often does the commission reelect officers? How long have you been chair?
I can't tell you, and I don't know the exact timelines. I know I will be on the commission until 2027. I don't know the exact timelines. I know since I started in, I want to say two or three, three years ago, that I am the second chair since I've been there. So somebody else was chair, and then I came in as chair, so.
So you're not aware of a regular annual or semi-annual schedule of reelecting chair and vice chair?
Right. And we did just reelect a vice chair, but Hugh had been on the commission for years and years, and it was, his term had expired, so.
Is the expertise of members what is needed to make good decisions in the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I believe so. We have everything from engineer, we have a contractor, property owners. I think there's a wide array of, I would say the community is represented on our commission, yes.
Throughout the, throughout the community?
Yeah.
Good. Anything else, counsel? That was quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, I'm going to jump past agenda item number four and await the mayor's arrival later this morning, so we will jump to agenda item number five, the Airport Master Plan Update. Dave Mitchell, representing our Dura Group and airport staff members, will be present to provide counsel an overview of the progress of the airport master plan. Staff will answer council questions and receive feedback for finalization of the plan. If you'd introduce yourself and proceed.
Good morning. I'm Dave Mitchell with our Dura Group, as the councilman just said, and we've been working on your master plan for a couple of years now, your airport master plan, and we, thanks for the time this morning to just give you an update, we're getting close to the end of the process, so we wanted to present to the council where we're at and what alternatives we've developed for your airport. So my intent is to go pretty quickly through this. Feel free to stop me at any time. I have a tendency to fall into like acronyms and engineering buzzwords, and I apologize in advance for that, so please feel free to stop me if you, if you need some explanation about anything.
Kristi?
Kristi Hines, I'm the Airport Management Assistant, and I'm just here to show a face from the airport. Dave has all the information.
I appreciate that, Kristi. So, so as I said, I'll just start with some, it's been a while since I've been here, but just a quick review of the airport master plan process. Master plans are required by the FAA. Because you receive federal money to support your airport in the form of grants from the FAA, they require you to keep a master plan updated. And more importantly, there's an element of the master plan called an airport layout plan, which is a set of drawings that depicts the airport, the current and future airport. And the FAA, excuse me, in order to get, to continue receiving grants from the FAA, you need to have an up-to-date approved ALP, airport layout plan, on file with the FAA. So that's really what this is about. It had been 10 years or so since you had done an update, and the FAA requires that they be updated for airports like yours every seven to 10 years, give or take. So that's why we initiated this process. The process, there's a, it's regimented, it's a regimented process by the FAA, and it follows, the master plan report is organized by the steps that we follow, basically. And what's on the screen right now are the, is a table of contents from the report, and what's in the purple box there is really the meat of the study. We have an inventory, we take stock of where your airport is or was when we started the process, and then develop a forecast, which is really an educated guess of the future, where you're headed in the future, and then based on that forecast, develop what facilities are required to meet the anticipated future demand, and then based on those requirements, we develop alternatives to meet those requirements. And we're at that phase, we've developed alternatives, and are kind of wrapping that up. And then once that's done, we can build a plan on how to build that, get your airport layout plan set together, there are, and then we'll be essentially done. There are a number of other chapters that you see there, environmental overview, recycling and solid waste management, which is a fairly new requirement that the FAA has put in there, the airport layout plan, obviously, and then finances. And then planning for compliance just means, when you take a grant from the FAA, you get, you sign a set of grant assurances that you agree to comply with for a specified period of time, the life of the project, basically. And, and that's just, that chapter is a requirement that we add that to identify how to stay in compliance, so. So start with the inventory. We look at a laundry list of things, the physical environment of the airport, airport land use, or land use around the airport, based aircraft, which are aircraft that quote-unquote "live" at your airport. unquote live at your airport, the layout of the airport and its facilities, does it meet FAA standards, paving condition, a wide variety of things. We look at look at the whole airport. But I do want to point out that this study is funded by the FAA. They care about the airport operational side of the airport, not so much the land side, what we call land side. Land side's really outside the fence. We do look at some things that are outside the fence, support facilities for the airfield, but the other, the business park and the other property that you have at the airport, we really don't get into that, because frankly, the FAA doesn't care about that. That's your business, not theirs. So anyway, we look at the the airfield operational side of it, just document what you have, basically. And then we develop a forecast. We do this using economic trends and other forecasting methodologies. We do have to get the forecast approved by the FAA, which in this case, as is usually the case, frankly, delayed the project a little bit. We submitted it, and it took a while for them to get around to approving it. But we did get approval last year in October, and then once we have that, we can move forward with the other phases of the project, so. We look at three main areas, the fleet mix, that's the mix of aircraft that use your airport regularly, total operations at the airport, and then employments. Employments are ticket buying passengers who depart from Pocatello. They enter the aviation system at your airport. That's an employment in the FAA. And that's important, because employments are how the FAA doles out money. Essentially, there's a set of formulas that that define how much, how airports get grants based on employment. So that's important now, and it's important as we look to the future also.
Can I interrupt first? Does that include de-employments?
No, only employments.
So they don't care how many people get off, just how many get on?
Right. And that's, I don't know why exactly that is, but they, they, because I think it's what, the reason for that is that when you buy a ticket and get in and enter the aviation system in the U.S., that's when you pay your fee, your fines, your, not fines, your taxes, your fees. So you pay your ticket tax and your passenger facility charge and those things when you when you enter the system. And so that's, in a way, it's how they measure what your airport is contributing financially to the system. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So when somebody comes, flies to Pocatello, like I did last night, I entered the system yesterday in Spokane and flew here, so I paid, you know, I paid my ticket tax when I entered the system in Spokane, without exit. Obviously, a forecast helps us look to the future, schedule projects, plan for funding, and then the ultimate goal, of course, is to make sure that your airport meets the demand of the flying public at your airport, and then is safe. That's that's what this is all about. This is a summary of the forecast. I know there are a lot of numbers on on this slide, so I just wanted to highlight a few things. Our forecast for commercial operations showed a pretty significant decline in in the first five years of the study and then building back up. That was based on, because when we were doing this forecast was when you dropped one flight a day. So the 2021 data reflected two flights a day, I believe.
Three, it was still.
Was it still three? Yeah. And then, so we showed it dropping and then recovering over the 20-year planning period, but but not not getting back to the 2021 operational level. However, farther down, we have the employment forecast, which again showed that dip, but then recovered at a much stronger rate. And the explanation for that is, operations are are a measure of landings and takeoffs at the airport. Employments, obviously, are passengers who get on the planes. So what we anticipated in the forecast was that the the aircraft that serve your airport would get larger, or up gauge, as we say in the industry, so. And and that fits with national trends, as I'm sure you're aware, everywhere airlines are going to larger aircraft.
And of course, this has changed already, because we had a second flight added now, so this really was the best educated guess at the point at which the forecast was done a year ago.
Thank you, Kristi.
Councilman Nichols.
So by the time your report is finished, will you have the numbers updated to reflect two flights a day?
No, it is, will be based on the forecast, as has already been submitted and approved by FAA at the point we did it a year ago.
Yeah, and I know that's, that seems, to me, that's frustrating, too, but but these reports take a while to get done, and if we tried to update it every time we finish the report, we we just get stuck in a constant. And and it's extremely, this was a, from a forecasting standpoint, this is a terrible time to do a master plan update, just because we're coming out of COVID and the aviation industry, there's so much turmoil in it right now, that's very difficult to predict the future.
And one point we should make is that just because your master plan says something, you are not held to that. This helps us develop our five and 10-year plans. We can alter those plans at any time. So if we get, you know, everything comes back really quick, and all of a sudden we need something in our terminal that the master plan said we didn't, we can change that. So we are not bound to what this plan says.
Counselor Mastroi.
Is your company the one that put together this forecast?
Yes.
Is there, I don't know what what exactly goes into this process, but is there a possibility of seeing even just a rough estimate of updates for our own person, like for our own city just look that doesn't necessarily go in the master plan, of how those numbers may look now that we've added the second flight back?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I'd be really interested to see those numbers.
Not too hard to do.
Will there be any kind of an appendix that makes a note of COVID for future reference down the road when we're reexamining all this?
Believe me, we have many disclaimers in the report about COVID. And honestly, it's, part of it's COVID, but there are so many issues in the airline industry right now with the pilot shortage and various other things. It's it's a lot of, there's a lot of change in the aviation industry right now that makes it difficult to predict the future. But as Kristi said, nothing about this locks you in. You know, if if an airline came and said, we want to start flying 3737s a day to Pocatello, no one would say you can't do that because it's not in your master plan. You could certainly do that, so. Just moving on, back to operations, the general aviation operations, we show about a 1%, a little over 1% increase or growth rate over the course of the planning period. And then military, we're supposed to look at military, and military operations are practically impossible to forecast, because military's not going to tell you what they want to do. But it's a small number, and it really doesn't affect the overall facility. Total operations, we showed a compound annual growth rate of about 3/4 of a percent over the 20-year planning period. And then lastly, down at the bottom, we look at based aircraft. Again, aircraft that live at Pocatello, that are based there, operate out of there most of the time, and we showed a modest growth over the planning period there of just about 0.7% for you.
Counselor.
Cat.
Just on on that issue of aircraft, does that reflect where we are now? Because I know we have.
I was going to make a statement, and then I thought, no, we'll just keep going, but we have had an incredible number of hangar inquiries and hangars being built just within the last year and especially within the last few months. So I think this is probably where we were a year ago when this forecast was made, but the general aviation interest has really upticked, and we're running quickly out of hangar property, which is part of what this plan is looked at. So I think those numbers are probably going to be low for what we're going to see in the next few years.
Okay.
Right.
I'd like to add a question to that. Are the requests coming from current intended aircraft? Are they coming from potential new aircraft stationed here?
Both. So there are new ones that want to come in.
Larger aircraft?
Mostly just, you know, private, what you'd think of as your general aviation aircraft, but.
Single engine.
Yeah. I think we all know we have a lot of out-of-state people moving in, and a lot of those people have aircraft, so we get lots of calls from out-of-state as well as ones that are located American Falls, Blackfoot, in the, near our airport, because we don't have any hangar space, and so they're wanting to move into our airport.
Yes. So regarding your your forecast, what are the major items you're looking at when you're forecasting?
Like to develop the forecast, you mean?
Right, right.
Well, we look at census data, we look at economic data from a variety of sources, and and we kind of look at those trends and and tie, because statistically proven that airport growth generally matches community growth, and so, and economic growth in particular. And so so we can can make some correlation to those trends and then project operations based on that, if that makes sense. So it's a variety of, I mean, I I can't even remember honestly the different sources that we looked at, but various different economic agencies or economic, sources of economic data, and then the census and state data as well, to kind of, and kind of gel that together to get a general trend for the area.
All right, thank you. Counselor.
I was just wondering, and and I'm not sure that it's part of this, I know you've talked, the last time you were here, about the overall economic impact of our airport, and I was wondering if you have any updated information as part of this study.
This plan doesn't really look at that. That study was conducted by the state, and I believe they will do a refresher, but they haven't said when that will be.
But not in this plan? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that that economic impact of airports in Idaho, and this is true in all states, as far as I know, that is determined by the state.
Yeah.
Because it's more, it's a broader, it's a bigger picture issue, and so so they they develop that information, as Kristi said, and I think they're on a, again, every seven, five to seven year cycle to to update that information.
Thanks. Counselor.
So total based aircraft in 20 years will probably increase by seven? Is that?
That's what the projected, the, our data says. What's happened since we got that approved says that's probably not true.
We currently have one hangar being built with one, two, three, four, five, six, going to come before you as a lease soon. There are not aircraft in there yet, they are not being built yet, but that's the amount of demand we have, so.
Okay. And the other, the other thing to to mention here is that your current, when we did the inventory, the current hangars, the current number of hangars was 25, but you had 48 based aircraft. So there were a number of hangars that are aircraft at your, basically your aircraft, at your airport that were not in hangars, or they may be sharing a hangar or whatever. But so, and and this has been true for many years that I've been working with your airport, that you haven't had as much enough air hangar space. And and that's another difficulty in forecasting, is if you have a constrained condition, as you do, because you have limited amount of hangar space, that, of course, will constrain how many based aircraft you have. If you had more space to build hangars, especially if you had more hangars, then, see, the the based aircraft might jump considerably.
With the current space we do have available, how many more hangars could we possibly build?
The ones, the six that I mentioned leaves us with about two spaces that are readily available, and so part of this plan and one of the alternatives we've developed is where do we go to next? And we found a good space for a good hangar community that'll give us several more. It'll take some infrastructure, some planning, but that's what we're looking at next, is getting started on that.
This has been a topic of the Airport Commission for the last couple of years, is realizing this trend is there, we're trying to figure out how to do it economically.
And it is recent. We, until two years ago, had not had a hangar built on the field since 2001, and then within the last year, we've had three, four, and six more that are interested, so.
Okay, critical aircraft, we we need to identify what's called the critical aircraft, and what what the FAA defines as the critical aircraft is the most demanding aircraft that operates at the airport 500 times or more per year. And so you may have larger aircraft than that, or more demanding aircraft than that, and by more demanding, I refer to either size or landing speed. You may have some that operate at less than 500 operations that are not the critical aircraft. So we have three. We've identified three in your case, which is somewhat unique. The first, and and probably the most important in the FAA's mind, is the commercial, commercial aircraft, and that's the EMV 175, which has started operating at your airport already. That's the critical aircraft for commercial operations. The general aviation critical aircraft is the the Beech 1900, which which we use to evaluate apron areas and hangar areas where the commercial aircraft doesn't go. And then the special use critical aircraft, obviously, you have operations, the DC-10, which is very unique in the system, and, you know, those operations have continued to grow as BLM has built out their firebase at your airport. That's a very demanding aircraft, it's huge, as you know, if you've seen it. And so even though it, at the time that we started the study, it did not operate at your airport 500 times a year, it still needs to be evaluated, because it dictates a lot of things like runway width and taxi width and things like that. So we need, we need to accommodate that aircraft, which obviously your airfield already does. We want to make sure that the plan reflected that that aircraft operated here and continue to operate here, so.
So what makes, because when you first started out, you said this is unique to have these three different types of aircraft at this airport. So what makes it so unique?
Really, what makes it unique is the special use, having a special use critical aircraft, like the DC-10. Normally, the FAA, if you had an outsized aircraft, but it operated 100 times a year at your airport or something like that, the FAA would say, well, that's fine, but we're not building facilities to accommodate that. In this case, because it is so large compared to your other traffic, and because, though we couldn't forecast that at this point, but it looks like it would continue to grow in operations at your airport, the FAA allowed us to plan for it. That's what's unique.
Counselor.
I just wanted to add to that, isn't one of the things that we have to accommodate with that particular aircraft, the the ability to handle the weight of it? Don't we have one of the only airports in the whole area that can handle that big of an aircraft?
Yes. It's weight, and then because of its wingspan and the width of its landing gear, and the speed at which it lands, it needs 150-foot wide runway, and then the runway length that you have is adequate for it as well. So it's all those things together.
Counselor Nichols.
So the DC-10 is more demanding than the commercial aircraft?
Yes.
And can you give me an idea of the magnitude of that as far as, you know, air length and width and?
Man, you're stretching me today, but, well, the the EMV 175 has a wingspan of, I think, 100 and, about 100 feet, give or take, maybe a little more, and I think its maximum takeoff weight is about 80,000 or 90,000 pounds, maybe, maybe a touch more than that. The the DC-10 has a wingspan of, I think, 200, 200 feet, and maximum takeoff weight of like 600,000 pounds.
But how does that impact infrastructure, like runway length and?
Yeah.
Asphalt thickness?
How we build it.
Yeah, how we.
It it really affects asphalt, you know, the pavement strength, and then the the key thing, the length, the runway length isn't as big an issue. It's, you know, it's a very powerful aircraft, it's designed to take off, you have a, what is it, 9,000 feet long?
1,060.
9,000 foot runway, and most aircraft are designed to operate on runways of that length, regardless of size. But what really matters is the runway width at 150 feet. Boise has a couple 150-foot wide runways, but those are the only ones, only other ones in Idaho that are that way, other than Mountain Home Airport Space, but that one doesn't care.
Military, right?
Is that a special, the the DC-10, does it drive much? Is that a special, the, the DC-10, does it drive much in this master plan?
No, because you already have the facilities. If you didn't, it would, it would be a big issue. You know, if, if they wanted to be here and you had 100 foot wide runway, it would be a big issue because we'd have to figure out how to widen your runway. Because you have that, the main, the main goal in including it in the study is to preserve that capacity, not to add. Does that make sense?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
I was at the airport one day when one of those was taking off and it looked to me like he used every foot of that runway to get airborne.
Well, especially in the summer, and they're always here in the summer because of the fire season. But when it's hot, those, those firefighting aircraft can use all of it. And they, because they, I think, I don't know this for sure, I don't know what their operational standards are, but they can push the envelope more than a, a commercial airline can because they want to maximize their payload so they can put more foam on the fire. So, yeah, they, they do use it all often. Just in summary on the facility requirements, generally speaking, your, your facility meets the demand, except for hangars. Your terminal is more than adequate for the forecasted implements because you, you've done a great job of keeping up with the terminal line, expanding it. The whole area that you have is just more than adequate for the forecasted demand. And all your other support, support facilities, the, the removal building and firefighting, airfield firefighting and all that are adequate. Generally speaking, the airfield is adequate. As we've discussed, the 150 foot wide by 9,000 foot runway is, is more than adequate for the traffic. Well, adequate for the traffic, if we include the DC-10, more than adequate for everybody else. There is an issue with the crosswind runway that I'll get into a little bit more in a second. This is a minor issue, but when we were evaluating the wind coverage, what we call wind coverage, which again, I'll explain more in a second. It was pointed out to us that where the weather station, automated weather station on the airport is, is not, it doesn't give accurate readings for the whole airfield as far as wind goes. So we think a supplemental wind sensor is needed. Again, that's not a major issue, but it's just something that we wanted to document. And then the hangar development is definitely needed to meet current and future demand as we've discussed. I'll, I'll just kind of walk through those as we go. So in a, in a map form, you know, runway 17 through 5 is the north-south runway. That's the quote-unquote crosswind runway. And then 321 is the primary runway. Taxway Gulf is the east-west runway, taxiway across the top of the airport there, the north end of the airport. And then taxiway Alpha is not, I guess it's labeled down in the lower left there, but, or right, I guess. Yeah, no, left, is, is the parallel taxiway to 321. So that's the most important taxiway in the FAA size. So, and then we, we put two boxes there for hangar development. The circles with the exclamation points in them are the safety area issues. For 1735, there's what's called the runway protection zone, which is a, this area, imaginary area off the end of the runway that it extends across the interstate. And, and that doesn't meet standards for the RPZ. And then where the, the lips is there, the runway, what's called the runway safety area, which I won't get into, but is just another area that we have to evaluate. It's the most important safety area on an airport. On both sides and off the ends of the runway that has to be free of objects. And where taxiway Alpha makes that turn down there, the RSA overlaps with the edge of the taxiway. So we, we needed to address that. Those are really the only two standards issues that we needed to look at. And as I said, most, most of your other facilities meet, meet the standards. So wind analysis, we'll try not to get too technical here, but.
Corey.
So those two, those two marks that you had up there, are those critical to the function of the airport? Are they demonizing to the airport's function? Or is it kind of just like a thing that we just monitor and progress over time or?
We need to have a plan to address them. It doesn't mean you can't, can't operate or anything like that. We just need to develop a plan to address them.
Right, as you can see, I mean, obviously the RPZ has gone across the interstate since the history of the airport. So it's not an issue of functionality, it's a compliance regulatory issue that FAA wants us to look at.
What could be a potential solution? We're not going to move the interstate.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to move the interstate. We're not doing that. Well, actually, in this case, based on our analysis, that, the size of the RPZ is based on that traffic that uses that runway. The size of the traffic. So the larger the traffic and the faster it comes in, the bigger that space gets. So based on our analysis, the use of that runway is smaller aircraft. So we can just reduce the size of the box and get it off the interstate. So that, that one's fairly easy. The other one, we have to move the taxiway to get it out of the safety area, which I'll get into in a minute. But speaking of 1735, the way FAA guidance is written, they'll pay for, they pay for the runways you need by their definition. And so, they have a concept called wind coverage. So we analyze the wind at an airport site. And the, the idea is to line up the runway with the prevailing winds most of the time. And so, we want that runway to be lined up with the wind, wind 95% or more of the time. If it doesn't meet that requirement, then the FAA will pay for a crosswind runway where you can build a second runway to operate when the winds are different.
Keep going.
Okay. So we looked at, and, and the way the FAA sees that is, as I said, we'll pay for what you need. And if you don't need a crosswind, you can have one, but we're not paying for it. It's, it's kind of their philosophy. And it's not kind of their philosophy, that's their philosophy, that's their, that's their rule. And so, we looked at the wind. And when we initially looked at it, using the, the data from the airport weather station, what we call ASOS. ASOS stands for Automated Surface Observing System. So it's just an automated weather, weather station. We looked at the data from that and it looked like the existing, the primary runway had enough wind coverage, which meant that the crosswind would no longer be justified. Then in discussions with staff and tower and others at the airport and the National Weather Service at the airport, they said, well, actually where that is, you don't get an accurate depiction of weather, of the wind at the airport, for the whole airport. So they gave us some additional wind data. We reevaluated it, we reevaluated it. And the crosswind was justified, but for smaller aircraft only, which indicates that a shorter length, maybe less width, would be what was, what the FAA would pay for going forward. Now I'll leave that hanging for a minute, answer any questions you have. When I get to the alternative, I'll show you where we ended up with that.
Corey.
So back to the prior, the regulatory issue that we had there. If we're out of compliance, is there a possible penalty or something that could ensue because we're out of compliance?
The, the way, the way the FAA would, the main leverage the FAA has against you is money. And so, if, if you said, yeah, we know about this safety issue, we don't meet your standards here, but we don't care, we're not fixing it. They would say, okay, but you're not getting our money. And if it was egregious, if it, if it had, you know, impacted the safety of the flying public, they could say, well, the airlines can't fly to your airport anymore because you're not safe enough. So, but as long as you have a plan and you're working toward it, and, and in this case, the, the runway safety area issue at taxiway Alpha is really pretty minor. As far as that goes, it's a technicality basically. And they just want that, to check that box. Obviously, if, if it was, well, people are risking their lives every day, they would put a stop to it. But, but yeah, there, there's no fine for that. They, they have, they have two main lever, pieces of leverage. They can withhold grants from you and they could pull your certificate for commercial operations.
But we work very closely with FAA and they've been a part of this plan and a part of all of our airfield projects. And so they know we're working on it and what our proposed solutions are and, and they're in agreeance with what we're doing.
So I'm guessing you're going to get to this point. But, so for this that we're talking about now with the, with the crosswind, they'll only meet up to a certain width or a certain length for smaller aircraft. But let's say we were like, you know, we want the wider, we want the bigger. Can we match it to whatever they're going to pay for and then we just throw in the rest and then we?
Correct.
Sure. You know, if, this is just a hypothetical, but if, if the, the plan said based on the aircraft that, that need that runway, it needs to be 60 feet wide by 4,000. And you wanted to keep the 7,200 by 100, I think it is now, or 75, I can't remember. They'd say, well, sure, go ahead, but we're only paying for the, the part that, that's justified. And we've, I've had that conversation with other clients. That's fine.
Proceed.
Okay, we're finally to the alternatives. We developed some alternatives, we presented to our two advisory company committees back in May. And then we had a public open house in June. And then after that, we consulted with the FAA and the airport staff and kind of revised the alternatives and got on your agenda for today. And so, here we are. And so there's really four areas I just wanted to talk to you about. The runways, taxways, again, that wind sensor, and then the hangar development. So on the runways, there's no change for 321 or the primary. On 1735, we looked at a couple of options to shorten it. I don't know how well you can see them on this slide, I apologize. But if this, this option would remove the southern end of it and then leave the length, you know, the justified length here in blue there. And then the other option would shorten it on the north end. And the problem with that is that currently on 1735, you can access the south end of the runway on taxiway Alpha and the north end on taxiway Golf. If we shorten it, one or, one of those goes away, one of those connections goes away. So we'd have to build another connection and then build a parallel taxiway to that runway. That's really expensive and not really worth it to, to spend a bunch of extra money to shorten the runway. And so ultimately, we ended up that the plan will show the runway state in its current configuration.
Counselor Nichols.
So why would you consider shortening a runway?
Because that's what the FAA would pay for. That if, if you, because the wind data indicates that that runway is only needed for small aircraft because larger aircraft are not as, not affected by wind as much as smaller aircraft. If, if, if that runway is only needed for smaller aircraft, then that's all we'll pay for.
So, once this plan is published, say if tomorrow, once it's done, 1735 needed to be rehabbed or rebuilt. With this data, FAA would only pay for a shorter length of it. By the time it actually needs done, which could be, we just rehabbed it a few years ago. So we've got a good 15, 20 years. Of course, we'll have another plan or two, and so we'll see what it says then. But if it needed done tomorrow, they would only pay for a shorter length than what we have now. So we looked at the plan, do we say we're going to shorten it knowing that? And we opted no because we don't know what the conditions will be in 20 years when we actually need FAA to pay for that. So we'll have another couple of plan updates by then that we'll look at it again.
Thank you.
And the FAA is on board with that, Chris.
It also, it also would have solved the RPZ problem if you shorten that runway. So it's farther away from the interstate, then you don't have that runway protection zone that goes a teeny bit over the interstate. But we decided that cost versus benefit, that was not an appropriate solution for that.
How much would you shorten?
Well, I think it's about 2,000 feet shorter.
You did say though, that the FAA is on board with keeping it as it is as regards to the plans that Christie just laid out.
Now, if it, if it fell apart in five years, which I don't expect it will, it's in great condition. There would be, need to be a discussion with the FAA about how are we going to, how are we going to fix this? And at that time, you may need to revisit the issue. But, but for now, at least, we're going to show it as is. The taxiways, we looked at, again, various alternatives to correct that safety area issue at the southwest end of 321. And then we looked at the future of taxiway Gulf across the north side of the airport. And then at, at its east end where it connects to 321, it comes in at kind of an odd angle that doesn't really meet FAA standards. So we looked at that as well. For taxiway A, what we're going to do is, so the, the rectangular area is the runway safety area for runway three. And as you can see, the reddish is where the taxiway is today. And that, that corner of it just touches the edge of the taxiway.
Teeny little touch.
But what we have to look at there is an aircraft on that taxiway with its wingtip and the safety area. And so, we moved the, the taxiway to the south. And then it will just have, it's a little bit non-standard, but have the hold line here. The hold line would be here. And then you come in at an angle to the left.
So it'll move from the dark reddish shaded is what it is now to the peachy yellowish pale. They just adjust that taxiway down a little bit.
How long is that taxiway?
Down there, it's probably 500 feet, maybe a little more. And it's in pretty rough shape anyway, so it needs to be rebuilt relatively soon. So when we rebuild it, we'll just pop it over.
Corey.
Is this a project that the FAA will pay for or?
How soon does that need to be done? Yesterday?
Not urgently, but it needs to be done.
It is not in our five-year plan at this point.
And then taxiway Gulf, we discussed, should we keep it or not?
Actually, it is, sorry.
What's that?
I think when we redo the runway, we were going to do that. So it is in our five-year plan.
So we decided to keep taxiway Gulf. And then at this end, right now, it, it ties in at that odd angle there. And we'll just come up to the end so we can square it out. And that meets FAA standards. A little bit safer to do it that way. And the reason for that is if, if somebody is taxiing toward the runway, it's difficult for them to see if an aircraft is coming in on the other end of the runway. If that makes sense. So that's why they want us to.
So you meet the runway 90 at a 90 degrees.
So the pilot can see in both directions.
As I remember during the hearing or committee meetings, you had the, the general aviation pilots wanted to retain Gulf.
Yes.
They liked it.
Because a, a number of the hangars and as we'll see in a minute, the future hangar development area are at this end of the airport. And to get to runway 35 or 17 from there is a long taxi if you don't have Gulf. You have to go all the way around the airport. The wind sensor, again, we want an additional wind sensor. The red arrow is where the site is today. And then the supplemental will be down at this other, other red area. And that site, we didn't pick that site, Noah, Noah told us where it is. I generally go with what they say on this. Hangars, as we've discussed quite a bit, you need more hangars. Now, the priority is for the smaller hangars. We also wanted to provide some space for larger hangars. You don't have a huge amount of demand for like business jet hangars today, but that, that could change pretty quickly. So we want to be able to accommodate that. And especially, those kind of hangars are, generate a lot more revenue for the airport. And, and of course, if you had a business that wanted, one of the great strengths of your airport is the multi, multimodal element of it with rail and interstate and a fully capable airfield. So there's certainly, in my mind, the possibility of a business that would want fly-in site access for their facility and then a hangar to fly in and out. So, so we wanted to accommodate that for larger aircraft. But be flexible in how we planned it so that we don't want to be too rigid. Because then if we set it up for 50 by 50 hangars and somebody wants to build a 75 by 75, we want to be able to accommodate that too. And then we looked at a couple sites just to keep those development costs down because it does cost a fair amount of money to develop sites like this. We looked at some sites that are in the existing apron where the apron isn't needed. So this is kind of zoomed in on on that the small hangar area. A few banks of hangars out in the apron here. And then a new area here with a couple rolls of hangars with the availability for future development behind that. And then another small area to the to the west of that as well. What I want to point out here is that this site is on top of the current Speedway site. So this would displace that that Speedway as planned. My understanding is the Speedway is not used much, if at all, these days. And that's pretty prime real estate for airfield access, so that seemed to be a better use.
And it actually, there's a a line that FAA delineates on the airport that is aeronautical use property versus non-aeronautical use. The Speedway was kind of grandfathered in that line runs right down the middle of it. So they technically, according to FAA, half of that property is allowed for aviation use only, and they would like us to fix that. You know, they've said in the future, when this lease expires, it really should be used for aviation only, and that is the ideal location for the hangar development. So we would opt to use the entire property for hangars.
So and just as an aside, you know, hangar hangar development is great for the airport because you generate revenue, you lease the ground that the hangars are built on. It also generates more fuel flowage, you know, at your airport, which is also revenue stream. The FAA will pay, will help you develop sites, they won't build the hangars for you, but they will build the the taxi lanes, as we call them, to access that site and do the general site development, roads, roads to that site and the taxi lanes. So but you would have to pay for, and they would pay to remove the the Speedway, for example, if if this site's going to be developed, they've paid to demo that. The utilities to the site, you might have to fund some of that locally, but they will cover a lot of the development costs. And so part of our job is to get that in the plan for when that when that makes sense to do, when you can get grant funding for that. It would probably be just based on funding availability, you do this in a phased approach, you do a piece at a time.
Counselor.
Approximate cost to build hangars.
Build the hangars? Well, the hangars won't be your cost, that would be the developer's cost.
Correct.
They're expensive these days.
One of the most recent ones we had, I want to say, was about 300,000 for a pretty good size, 70 by 60.
Yeah, they're and then, you know, to develop the taxi lanes in there would be, this is a total shot in the dark, but a couple million dollars probably.
One, one and a half. We actually have a taxi lane, we knew that we needed hangar space, and we just recently updated our five-year capital improvement plan. And building a new taxi lane wherever this showed we needed hangars is on there for year two or three, it's coming up pretty soon, so we were just waiting for the site to be selected. And so that is in our plan for FAA grant funding just to start the taxi lanes.
Does the FAA have input onto style, size of construction or anything? Or do they simply help develop the site and the rest of it's up to a developer or the airport?
Right, they don't, they don't say much about style or construction materials, you can set that with your standards for your airport. You know, some airports are pretty restrictive on that, they have color requirements and materials and those sorts of things. Other airports are a lot more flexible on that, that's totally up to you. You know, obviously, they need to meet code and and all those things, fire code and all that. The FAA will care where they are as far as are they in the way of the tower's visibility of the airfield or did they penetrate any of the airports, the surface, there's imaginary surfaces all around the airport that the FAA cares about, that they don't want things sticking up anywhere, so so that matters to the FAA, but beyond that, it's up to you.
But they also have input into what can be in in a hangar?
That's really where they get involved is.
That's where they care.
It has to be used for aviation.
But they could have a bathroom, a small office?
Yes.
They can't have a an apartment.
No living quarters.
No living quarters. Can't you can keep your your boat and your hangar as long as there's an airplane in there too.
You have to have, you have to have a working airplane that is accessible. You can have other stuff as well, but the primary purpose, you have to have a plane that's viable.
I've been in a lot of hangars that have an airplane shaped hole and the stuff in them, but yeah, so they do, then they do care about that. And the reason that they care about that, and it may seem excessive sometimes, I I understand that, but they care about that because they the taxpayers have paid to build this whole facility. And they've built it to be an airport, not to be a storage, storage unit. So they want those buildings to be used for aeronautical use.
So I couldn't build an aircraft in one of those hangars?
Yeah, you could, that's an aeronautical use.
But it's not a usable aircraft yet.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the sticky point, but yes, we have allowed people, as long as they are building the aircraft, to have it hangered in there, yes, just because it's not flyable yet.
What they don't want you to do is have some, buy some inoperable aircraft and tug it in there so you can store your RV in there.
You you planning on building an aircraft, Rick?
I've thought about it for years. It's old to pass your pilot's life.
Okay, just to summarize the alternatives from from left to right here, update the taxiway A geometry down at the southwest end of of that taxiway. The supplement supplementary wind sensor will go down in that area as well. We didn't talk about this in detail, but we showed that moving to the northeast, that the large hangar development there, just a row of 100 by 120.
That most likely would be business use, corporate hangars or of airplane manufacturers that could just build airplanes in their facility.
And and again, that area is strategic in my mind, just because of the the land behind that, that's developable for business. I think that's highly marketable to have a spot for hangars that are close to the fence, so.
Could a facility like that be used for aircraft repair?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, aircraft manufacturing, aircraft repair, even a- anything that relates to an aircraft that.
Flight training.
Flight training.
Cargo.
All those things are not just allowable, they're encouraged on airports.
Good.
Because you can't build an airplane off an airport, eventually it's got to, you know, fly. 1735 will stay at its existing length, will maintain taxiway G with that one modification down at the the northeast end. And then the the hangar development area is probably the biggest, biggest change to the airport. So honestly, there there's not a lot of changes here. And that that's just an indication that you have the facility you need for the most part. And so we need to fix these things, but or have a plan to fix them. And but your terminal, as I discussed, meets meets your needs for the knowable future. Obviously, there, and we kind of documented some of this, and so the your staff can plan for we had an architect look at your buildings on the airport. You know, so you can plan for major capital expenses in those buildings like HVAC upgrades or things like that that need to be done. But your your terminal is in remarkable shape, which is a testament to your staff and the job they've done taking care of it, because it's not the, not the newest building in town. Our next steps are to finalize these alternatives and then develop an implementation plan, which is basically estimates of what these will cost and when when they fit in the plan. Complete those other chapters, we'll have one more public meeting. And then we'll we'll bring the airport layout plan to you when it's ready. Because that does need to be approved by the city and signed by the mayor. And then then they'll go to the FAA for final approval. And so our goal is to get the ALP to you, hopefully by the end of the year, if not the first part of '24. And then then we'll be essentially done.
So we welcome feedback and any ideas. We'll invite you specifically to the public meeting as well, and then you'll see it one final time when we're ready to submit to FAA.
Will these plans have timelines?
They have general timelines, like in, you know, these, this is the order we think you'll do your projects in, but they're not, they're not set in stone as.
We use this plan to then make our five-year CIP, which gets revised annually so that we can incorporate anything that has changed. So this will give us a general overview of what we'll do for our CIPs.
And and the big expense that that your airport is faced with in the near future is 321 needs to be rehabilitated. It's been a long time, and so it needs to be rebuilt or rehabilitated. So that that's the big cost that that we're working on the preliminary design of now as a separate effort, not part of the master plan. So that that will be mentioned in your plan here, but that's not really a master planning issue, because it's more of a maintenance project.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. With that, we're going to go at ease until 10:30, give the mayor and I a chance to swap seats.
I was feeling comfortable over here.
We can take a break.
Thank you for joining us this this morning after our break. President Cheatham, thank you for covering for me while we were, I was out at some appointments, so I appreciate that. We'll jump back to agenda item number four as a proposed September fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. Finance Department staff will be in attendance to present to council detailed information on proposed fiscal year 2023 September budget amendments for the public hearing to be held September 21, 2023. Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. I apologize for my congestion as we get started. I've also got Bonnie and myself, Eugene Hill and Bonnie from the Finance Department. Again, as we've discussed, you know, this is the third amendment for fiscal year 23. And it's really good for the city because it gives us the flexibility that as we have revenues that come in from donations or grants or expenses, I'm sorry. Yeah, unanticipated expenditures or things like that. This allows us the opportunity to amend the budget so we have the flexibility to be good stewards of the citizens' money. So to start with, the line items that were impacted, it was a total of 3.7 million budget amendments. Moving from, again, just those budget items or funds that were impacted, it goes from 1.105 million point seven to a total of 109.4, just for clarification, and that includes the budget that was approved plus the last two amendments. And I'm just going to touch on a couple of them, because I'm a couple of the major ones would be, for example, parks, there was a donation from ICCU for $400,000. They're going to utilize 89,000 of that to do repairs. And and this council's been very good about, you know, the deferred maintenance, making sure we take care of the parks and the wrecks. The rest of that is going to be moved into Fund 78, so it can be used next year. And then also, there's, I think, another good one to look at is the 400,000, 450,000 from Streets. And they have done a really good job on maintaining the vehicles and taking care of it so that they had, they brought in $450,000 more than anticipated in those expenditures. And that's, if you look down, that's line 11. And then the other big one that I think is important to look at is line 14, where WPC already has the budget set aside, but they need the authority for the $2 million. And with that, I I would open it up for questions. Again, I I don't mean to be so hurried, but I think it's important just to get through this.
So we've got some questions, Counsel President Cheatham.
Well, when I look at your your table of budget amendments, that one, two, three, the sixth column, reserve balance, draft, department balance. When I look down through those that are general, non-department, the balance in that column doesn't decline. It's 803, there's $250,000 removed, and the balance doesn't change. I'm curious about the accounting standard that that I I don't understand.
No, that you're you're correct, that should change, I'll get that back to you. That should decrease as we move each one of those in summary, so I'll get that back to you. My apologies.
You you'll look on all of those to get those all.
Yeah, I'll send after the meeting, we'll summarize this table. Probably what I'll do too is put together a summary table, which shows the approved, original approved budget, amendment one, amendment two, amendment three, and then a summary, because I think that'll make it clear that it would be okay.
If I may follow up, Mr. Mayor. I guess part of my concern is, is this the way it's being published?
This is the way that it was published, yes.
So if it's inaccurate, do we need to go through the publication process again with a corrected version?
I don't know that it's inaccurate, because in, if I can, Rick, in in total, that budget hasn't declined until all those amendments were approved. I'll check with legal, if we need to, I'll republish it.
Okay.
If I if I might make a comment, I I actually, I prefer it this way because if you go just down in order, that presigns an implicit sense of priority to different projects, because if it moves down, when I get to the bottom of the list, I'd be saying, oh, well, this project is with a budget of, let's say, instead of the 8 million, it's 7 million. I know it's not that much, but it's, let's say that's the case. It it should be made in in reference to the whole of that project, rather, or the whole of that that department and analyzed independently. And so I I actually prefer the table as it is.
Okay. Well, does, I I can see what where Rick is, though, and what Rick is is saying and 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 I I agree, it ought to be going down as we've got this, but did it drop at the bottom?
I don't think so, I think I need to address that.
I mean, it says reserve balance, department balance, and the department balance, the way those non-departmental areas are included, that balance isn't changing, that's not accurate.
But but we haven't approved any of those things.
Right, we will. And this is what we're showing the public is going to be the department balance, so it's not accurate.
So I think there should be a final sum at the bottom, but but a running total implies the approval of previous things.
Well, I see what you're saying.
Right, because because that would imply, so if if you say, let's look line five to line six, those both come from general, non-department. If you move that amount down by 100,000, then when you're looking at line six and making the decision about whether or not to approve that outdoor rec balance, that is done with the assumption that the CRC in line five was already approved. And those decisions need to be made, number one, independent of each other. And while I think a final balance, if you were to approve everything, should be applied, that decision needs to be made with the understanding of how much is in the total balance, not with the assumption that everything prior had been approved.
Then how do we know whether we have enough money left to do it?
A final, a final sum, a final sum that says, everything that comes out of the nondepart, general, non-department, if everything were approved, that number from 8 million would go down to 7,750,000.
Hey, Josh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Councilman Mansfield, if we were to put a column that said, subject to approval, so that it doesn't, so it have another column, so that if to Rick's point, right, they could see that it going down, but if you happen to not approve a given one, but you could still see that, would that?
It it's not, I don't think it's critical either way, and I understand why why Rick would request it. It's it's just, I think that they are independent items and and should be evaluated independently. And and while I would like to see a total sum impact to that fund, to imply that they that they happen sequentially isn't necessarily accurate, in my opinion.
I wanted to add, I share a similar concern, not only implying that they happen sequentially, but but also that it's a kind of prioritization or ranking of sorts. That troubles me a little bit. I I think if there's a way to show definitely a a final balance, but also some other way, if you want to do some kind of running balance, but a way that doesn't suggest that we're ranking these projects or that the prior one has to be completed before the next one could be approved or could be approved, or if there's a way to not have it look like that.
I didn't take them as a ranking at all. I took them in some, and I just simply want to see what the balance is in that fund, you know, as we go through these.
So, so I think that, I think it's a good idea to do that. I think we're maybe making a mountain out of a molehill, but if there's confusion on the council, there's probably some confusion in the community. And I think that it is a good idea to put the, maybe make a column if approved and have that running balance. That, that can't hurt at all. I see what, what we've done, and I, and I understand, nothing's changed because we haven't approved anything. And so right now, our, the balance is the balance because nothing's changed, but the community should be able to see if these are all approved, what that looks like. And, and I think what we're looking at is the negative, how it's draining things down, but we're not looking at, why do we have extra coming in? And where is that coming from? And so I think that's, that's, I just don't want to confuse the public any more than, than, than we, I mean, it's a tough budget to understand anyway.
Right.
And so if we can simplify it some way, I think that would be appropriate.
Summary, if I can, we will go back and make those suggested changes circulated or bring it before council and try and have that done before the public hearing on next Thursday.
I think so, yes. Counsel, you okay with that? So that we know where that is? If you can, if you can do that so that, and email it, can they email it to everybody? Where's our legal representation? I'm looking at Tom. Our street guy. That depends. I think you can go ahead, and if you would, just do that, add that list, and email that to the council. And then they can take a look at it, and that'll, that'll help them as we move into the public hearing.
Absolutely.
And go from there. Is that fair enough, counsel? Any other questions, counsel? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then let's move to agenda item six, Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grant Application. Science and Environment Division and Planning and Development Services staff members will be in attendance to discuss preparation of a grant application for the Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Plant, Planning and Project Design Grant for Fiscal Year 2023. The Water Smart Grant Application would provide necessary funding for 60% design plans for the Portnife River Oxbo Restoration Project.
I'll kick us off. Christine Howe, Grants Manager, good morning, members of the City Council. I'm joined with Hannah Sanger, our Science and Environment Administrator. We're just presenting information on the Water Smart Planning Grant, as the mayor detailed in the work session item. This grant does require a 25% match, so we wanted to present the information to you here at the work session to get any feedback and questions prior to moving forward with the submission at a formal council meeting. The grant is due in mid-October, so our intent is to take the feedback and present this to the first council meeting in October. And I'll let Hannah go into her presentation to explain what this is all about.
Okay. So I have brought this grant to council about a year ago, so before some of you were on council, and we applied for $5 million to do this project. We didn't get that grant, so we are starting again. This is just a planning grant. It is $400,000, so smaller, but we can get some of the planning work done, which is a hard, challenging often to get money to do planning for a project. So, let's see if I can, all right, you are, this is the old Cheyenne Bridge, where my cursor is here, and we're looking south, and the Portnife River runs, well, it runs the other way. It runs on the right side of this image. And then on the left side of the image is an enhanced view of the oxbows that show up. It is not what was there this spring. It's not what was there in 2006. Maggie Clark, some of you know her, enhanced it. So you can see, this is the highway ponds in the back, and then the plan is to put in, and this is all in concept, so this is what we're going to apply for money to get plans on. It'd be to put in culverts, these light blue dots, to direct water to the old highway ponds, to take out some sediment, and then to have culverts further down, that also potentially a small pond down by Hildreth Road, and then a wetland, and then the river could run in the old oxbows and then go back into the Portnife River. There would be a greenway path through this area. It is partly there now. It is this light brown line on this side, you can barely see it, that runs through it. That's just a concept of where it might go. The city owns much of this land, so we own all the land in red, although some of that is a conservation easement. So the land right, this southern part, is mostly conservation easement. So, this is the river in 2006 on May 30th, in the same area, so we had super high groundwater that day. So you can almost, it does look very similar to the previous picture that Maggie made. And you can see in this picture, the existing greenway trail had been, they had dumped this gravel there like three days before the groundwater rose up. So it, when the groundwater rises, it's just instantaneously up high, and then it slowly decreases. This area that's got the red around it is the private land where the city has a conservation easement. Everything in orange is what the city owns roughly. So, a couple concepts of this. So we've had some concepts done over the years. This one was done by Keller a few years ago. It was looking at floodplain, so what would flood, you know, if we did this project from the Hundred Year Flood, making sure that we wouldn't be flooding neighboring properties or starting to assess. So the Hildres live right, no, sorry, the Hildres are over here. And this is the Grady House back here, so that's, which the city has a first right of refusal on that, or we, we will own it when she dies, sorry. And so the plan here was, yeah, put the river in the dark blue line, and in there and out here. And then ISU did some analysis, similar oxbow concept in 2019. They worked with Dan Harrelson as well. And then the Army Corps did some analysis back in the 90s, looking at this as a potential project for us. So had a, a number of people do some rough concepts, you know, this, this is what we have from all those concepts. So this project, we would contract design work to restore a wetland and stream channel through the historic oxbows adjacent city land, install culverts under the railroad tracks for that purpose, settle out sediment, install a greenway path, do cultural resource preservations, there's petroglyphs in the area, and the grant does encourage a lot of tribal conversations with it. You know, do some restoration activities, enhance the aesthetics. The grant would prepare for getting environmental permits, but we would only be designing to 60%, so we wouldn't be doing the permitting, prepare for getting UPRR permitting, and do work with the city on community engagement and developing monitoring plans. And so we are anticipating applying for 397,500. City match is about 132,500, which we would use Science and Environment funds and staff time for that. And we're just sort of refining that right now. And it would all go towards, you know, the design work, and the anticipation is, we'd get the grant July of 2024 and spend a year and a half on this work. And then we could, ideally, we would get another grant for construction, but we would have a shovel-ready project. And the Bureau of Reclamation, which is funding this grant, they do have projects for construction as well, so. And that's all. Any questions?
Counsel, President Cheatham.
Does any of this land lie in the county?
No. It has all been, oh, actually, the, this red land is in the county.
Okay. I guess one of my concerns about wetlands is mosquitoes. Whether the county has discussed with their mosquito abatement program, if this would add any additional workload to that, you know, with the, with the mosquito-borne illnesses that we've had a raft of across the state the last few years, I'm just curious whether that is a potential risk.
I will talk to them about that and see what, and, and if we just need to be putting out some of those little mosquito larva trays on a weekly basis for a month or two. Good question. I don't know.
Counselmember Mansfield?
Are there any, I think, I'm trying to remember back to a year ago, and I think we talked a little bit about the railroad, and, and that's going to be involved. You talk about using this as a design opportunity to get a shovel-ready project. Does that include getting permissions from the railroad during the design phase?
I anticipate we would, the railroad wants to see a design, so we would, my anticipation is probably at the 60% design, we would be submitting to the railroad, but before that, having many conversations to make sure we are meeting their specifications. And, yeah, that's about, that's about all I can say.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
That's a great question.
Has the railroad been notified of this?
Yes.
Okay. And so they're just kind of waiting for a design?
Yeah. They are, they are waiting for a design. I asked them on the last project for a letter of support. They said yes, they never delivered. I'll ask them again. I expect it will be the same process of people down low say yes, and whoever has to sign it doesn't want to sign it. But they, they do recognize, you know, that we have the right to put a culvert under their railroad tracks, and as long as it meets their standards. So they, they can't block that sort of activity, but, you know, it takes a long time.
For sure. Counselmember Nichols?
Hi, Hannah. So would this project help to improve the water quality of the Portnife River?
Oh, yes. Great question. Yeah, this is probably the, the best project we have in the Lower Portnife Valley for improving water quality in the river because of sediment reduction potential and just, we would be taking water out in the spring and winter at high flows, not during the summer. When irrigation season is in effect, there's not a lot of water in the river, and, you know, everybody who lives by, or at the golf course would like the river to flow by them, and fishing game would probably like the river to flow by them, and I don't want to fight that battle. So it would, the, the oxbows that we create would dry up in the summer. You know, this summer, this spring, you know, water stayed in the oxbows for a while, and then it, it started to recede in July, and there was no, there's no water there now until you get to the highway pond. So yes, a big reduction, a reduction in sediment, and we expect that the planning effort would quantify how much sediment we could capture from this project, and then what the resulting maintenance would be for removing that sediment from a pond, or do we just let it fill in?
Counsel, President Cheatham?
Two areas I'd like to discuss. One is, does Union Civic Railroad have any history of approving or getting in the way of these kind of projects?
I don't know.
Okay. Second question, is there any way to calculate aquifer recharge from this project?
Yes. So that would be part of this, would be to have as part of this $400,000 to understand what sort of aquifer recharge we could get.
Good.
And I don't know. You know, I, we have not done any study like that, so.
Counselmember.
Not what the water in the highway pond now is aquifer water, correct?
It is aquifer water, yep.
Because of a good water year, we have it there this year.
Yep. We got some, we get some water coming. The Portnife River at high flows, water goes out the top of its banks into the aquifer, and so certainly this area was recharged a little bit by river overflow flooding that went into the shallow groundwater and then seeped down into the highway pond. But it is groundwater that you see in the highway pond.
Part of it, I guess, is Marsh Creek is probably our, our biggest for sediment, right? Going into the Portnife, the water actually changes colors there and doesn't clear up again until almost to the reservoir.
Yep.
Couple miles out, where, well, the treatment plant, it gets beautiful from there on that. So by diverting the water across, or is that water going to go into the highway pond from the river? Does that hurt the aquifer water?
That, that would be part of this study to make sure that we have appropriate water quality control for our groundwater. So, great, great question, and we have, I can get a bunch of answers for you, but they're not based on much right now.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, counsel? So I have a, a couple. It sounds to me like these oxbows, what's hap, what happens when we have a good water year and the water just appears, like it did in 2006 on May 30th? And we're running water into it. Now we flooded that area out. Is that our intent?
So this would, we'd have a, we'd have a downstream culvert, so water could leave this area, so it wouldn't create a rising, you know, we would regulate how high the water gets in here. So whether we want this area where my cursor is now to flood, and this area to flood, or we want it just to stay in the channel, those are, those are some great questions, and, you know, we've, I've been talking about them a lot, and I don't know where, where we'll go with the design. So questions with, you know, how we, what kind of plantings we do, what, and what kind of, yeah, whether we want this all to be a, a wetland or just the stream channel.
Well, I know when we have a high water year and we have flooding, I mean, I, I've heard just the other day, the Incom Reservoir, because it floods every year, but I think it's intended to, they've built it that way, or maybe not, but it does, and so we know that. But we also hear at Sacagawea Park, the flooding, and we have to do something about that, but that's, there again, that's intended to flood when we have those high years.
Yeah.
And so this would just be another place of concern the public could call and say, hey, you're flooding this out, it's gonna...
That's right. We'll probably get calls about it, and I would say, you know, rivers need floodplanes, and rivers naturally have floodplanes where they flood, and that's what Sacagawea Park is, and that's where the river returns nutrients to the soil, and you have a lot of aquatic life that depends on having floodplanes, a lot of wildlife and vegetation that depends on floodplanes. And when we put in the railroad tracks, we cut off this whole floodplain, and when the Portnife River flooded in the 60s, this area on the left side of the railroad tracks did not flood at all. It was cut off from flooding, so all the flooding was on the right side of the tracks. So one of the other goals is, is to restore the Portnife River floodplain. You know, Sacagawea Park flooding is a great thing. We get a lot of sediment down there. That is not a great thing, but we will have a lot of sediment that comes into this area as well that we're going to have to manage. But if we don't have floodplanes, we have a lot more downstream flood damage, and we have a compromised ecological health. So as we want to think about getting a trout habitat back, you know, we have a great trout fishery down on the bottoms. It's hard for them to make it through the concrete channel, but then this area is, you know, a pretty straightened river as well, and so to get some additional habitat for trout and for, you know, frogs and other aquatic life would be tremendous. We just don't have that in the city anymore.
And, and then I just had one other, we're getting a plan at 60%, so we have a shovel-ready project.
Yes.
Typically, how long does a plan stay a good?
Valid.
Valid plan?
I think it can stay a valid plan for a long time. I mean, it's, because it's really based on hydrology, and so you might, you know, if our, the hydrology of the river, for some reason, climate change happens, and we suddenly, you know, get 30 inches of rain a year, we'll, we'll have to tweak the numbers, but I imagine it's not going to change that much in the timeframe that we want to do the project.
Okay.
So, so we should be able to sit on it for 20 years if we need to.
If you had to.
I was going to say three to five.
Yeah, yeah.
Sit on it for three to five, or 20?
20, yeah.
Yes. Counsel, President Cheatham?
Do I understand you are discussing creating a diversion from the Portnife River into these oxbows?
Yes.
Do we have the water rights to do that?
That would be part of this study is looking at, so it would be, as I understand it, if we do it in the winter and spring, it can be done without water rights, but there's a lot of moving pieces here, so part of this would be, here's, here's where you need water rights, here's... need water rights, here's where you don't need water rights, and, but, there's a lot of questions to figure out.
I attended a meeting last night of the East Snake Pine Aquifer, Justin was here also, and so was Jeff, and one of the discussions was freezing water rights, there will be no more water rights.
Yeah.
For anything.
Yeah.
And that has me very concerned about what we're proposing, without investigating that in the future.
So, you have the right to restore old oxbows often, so that you can put water...
That's about to be changed.
Okay, so maybe we get this...
They are literally saying zero future water allocations for anything.
But you wouldn't need a water right to restore an old oxbow. And then the other part would be, if it's a rechar, you know, there, there's some, there's a, as I understand it, we can structure the project to not need water rights, but I want the engineer to figure that out for us.
Is that a state, federal?
State.
That's what's about to be changed.
Okay, yeah, so they, that's what these guys would have to figure out, is what?
Interesting.
What, what water rights we need and don't need, and, yeah.
Would, would, would this, if we were to do this, and we had some water rights that we were not using on a regular basis, would this be considered a use of the water rights?
Yeah, so, let's just say we have water rights up Mink Creek and Gibson Jack, and we wanted to, we could move those water rights from Gibson Jack and Mink Creek to this location, that would, that would be a possibility.
That was one of the other things that was discussed, was stopping the moving of water rights.
Okay.
In that meeting last night.
Yeah, so, that, so right now you can move them, so, but maybe that won't happen.
We have a legislator on the council.
And we may not, we may, we may not want to move them, you know, I, I don't know if that's the course of action the city wants to, to take, but I do want somebody to, yeah, explain our water rights as part of this.
It sounds like we're, we've got people in the middle of the meetings that those discussions are happening, and...
Well, our Public Works Director is a member of the committee that is looking at designing the management plan for East Snake Pine Aquifer, and this is exactly the kind of things they're talking about, I mean, it, it got really radical last night, they're talking about stopping people from drilling domestic use wells, simply because it depletes the aquifer.
Yeah.
And it's, and they're talking about legislation to make that happen, so who knows where it's going to go.
Yeah, I'm going to wait for the legislation.
Yeah.
Scott?
When I look at this project, right, it, it saves us, it's going to help us if we do have flooding.
Yes.
Right, all of a sudden, we have that problem, the other part of it that I like, that I really like, is the sediment part of the river, and, and, I mean, the river is not very pretty when it flows through Pocatello, but I have seen the upper end extensively, and the lower end, and it's a beautiful river, I mean, to the point that you can see to the bottom of it, in town, I haven't seen the bottom of this river in my lifetime, ever. So I, I think those are truly the, for me, is, is a push for that, right, is to clean the river up, and if it helps with flooding, one time in the next 50 years, it's worth it, it's, because I've also seen what a flood will do to the city, so, I, the water right thing, I think is going to be a battle for the next 100 years, and who knows where it's going to go.
The last and the next?
Yeah, probably so, our Public Works Director might have to carve this piece out of his little design too. Okay, any other questions? So what direction do you need from the council?
Just wanted to, we're going to bring it back to you on May, on October 5th, October 5th, and just want to see if they had any other questions, concerns, anything we should change before bringing it back to you for approval and submission of the grant, so. We might have some changes to the budget, but that's about.
There's four or five WaterSmart grants, so we didn't want to be too confusing presenting all of them at once.
I will have another WaterSmart grant back in December.
Okay, Councilwoman Lyric?
I just wanted to say, I think this is a really important project, one reason is mitigating future flood damage, but even more than that, I think anything we can do to improve water quality is just critical, so, I'm glad you're pursuing this, and I hope we get it.
One thing I just want to add while I'm here, and you have an image here, is so, been working with Dan Harrelson on this Greenway Trail, you know, we currently don't have access down to Hildreth Road through it, but eventually we will, and then we can get around the highway pond, and we can get almost down to Fort Hallmine Road, we're working with another property owner down there, so then there would be a completed trail some point in the near, in the future, to South Second, where you can join the AMI Trail, so that's, that's what's going on here, so, a real boon to the city for previously purchasing this property, I think it's going to be a tremendous asset.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then with that, we'll move to agenda item number seven, is an update of Garbage and Refuge Ordinance Title 13, sanitation department staff will be in attendance to present proposed updates to the Pocatello Municipal Code Title 13, Public Service, Chapter 13.28, Garbage and Refuge, to update and clarify the language per current policies and regulations associated with the city's sanitation services.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Tom Kirkman with the Legal Department, and Tyree Farnes, our Sanitation Manager.
At least we got somebody representing the Legal Department here, thank you for being here.
I got your back.
Jared's going to come running if he hears that.
Yeah, I'll pay for that later, I'm sure. Well, thanks for having us today, we're going to discuss the sanitation ordinance today. The ordinance has a lot of, let me rephrase, we've been operating under certain expectations and guidelines that didn't quite come across in the ordinance the way they should, so we're just doing some small amendments to clarify that. What we were proposing to do is, we've got some highlighted changes, if it's okay with the mayor, we just go one by one, and if you have questions, you can just stop me at the, at that position, at that place, and talk about it. So, the first one we want to do is the DOT 020, the garbage collection service, we've always operated as the sole proprietor of waste hauling in the community, it, it didn't say it in the, in the, in the code, and so what we would typically do is, if someone would come in, we would just say, we're, we're the game in town, and if others wanted to do some smaller hauling, we, they would have to get a right-of-way permit, and those were usually denied, and so we're just clarifying that, so that the city, you know, we've made a considerable investment in our sanitation department, and I, I believe we want to try and protect that and keep from, you know, other hauler agencies coming in and trying to, to move in.
Council President Chiedem?
Does this in any way affect a junk dealer who comes in and cleans out a house and hauls stuff to the dump, I mean, I, I don't see a differentiation in exactly what we're picking up here.
Yeah, we'll get to that one up in a minute, that'll be DOT 080, we'll cover that. Any other questions so far? The other thing you'll notice is we've, there's no longer a sanitation superintendent, so we've amended that to be director or manager, so pretty simple change there. So DOT 030, this kind of just memorializes what we're already doing now, basically the rule is, if you have a water meter, you're going to get garbage service, you're required to have garbage service. The second part of it is for temporary vacancies, so this turned into kind of a problem, this was a program that, that was started a while back, and we've since made a policy to stop that. So what would be able to happen is, let's say if you're a snowbird, and you want to leave for the summer, you could temporarily suspend your garbage service. The problems we ran into that, that we ran into is, people are very passionate about garbage, so I'll just start with that, they would put their garbage cans in their garages, so that we couldn't come pick them up, and then when they came back, they wouldn't call for the service to be reenacted, and so our drivers didn't know any better, and they would just dump those containers. We now have software, that's, all of our carts are geolocated, so we've remedied that problem, we just wanted to memorialize it a little better in the ordinance, does that make sense?
So how will that fix the problem?
So, if you have a water meter, you have garbage service, you can't just cancel the garbage service.
But if I'm going south, I could cancel my water service?
If you canceled your water service, then no garbage, but that's where it was different, there was a change made just in the sanitation policy, where you could still have active water and sewer, but no garbage, and it just created a lot of confusion, so.
Would you pick those cans up then?
Yeah, yes, and that was some of the issues, is they would put them in the garage, and so we couldn't get them, and then we'd never know when they came back, and they'd start. These, a lot of these are derived off of things that we've picked up on our new software system, that's where I get with, people are very passionate about garbage, there's a lot of shenanigans that go on, that's pretty, pretty cool to watch, I guess.
So is, is it tied now to when they turn their water off, their sanitation's turned off, when they turn their water back on, their sanitation's back on?
Yes.
So that's how we know, so if they want to push their carts into the garage, why do we care?
Right.
If it's tied to when they turn it on and off, do we care if we're picking them up and delivering?
Before the, go ahead, you'd probably explain this better than I can.
Yeah, so we would want to pick them up, because we, we keep a track of that inventory, and if their services are turned off in the system, we would no longer know that those carts are at that location.
Okay.
The big thing on this is, you just can't cancel garbage, if you have the water service, you have to keep the garbage service. Any other questions on that?
So at the time, when they cancel the service, do we immediately go pick up those cans right then, or?
Yeah, it's usually on the next cycle.
It, it kind of depends, if, if it's between, like, a home, a new homeowner coming in within a day or two, we can leave those if they come in and sign up immediately, if there's a two or three day lapse in that, we will go pick them up, so that they don't stay there without someone signing up for service.
So how do we enforce this, the person, say I go out of town, I'm, I'm heading south, I take the cans, put them in my garage, but I cancel my service, you don't know where my cans are?
Yeah, they wouldn't let you cancel your service until we're able to pick up those.
Until you got the cans, okay.
You would still continue to pay for the service, because you have those.
And also, if you were to bring those back out, all of our carts are now geolocated, and so the driver will pull up to the house and say, I'm not supposed to be dumping this, it would just...
Okay. All right, okay.
All right, next one is 060, this one caused a little upresk when we did this, so what we're putting here is that your can has to be placed on the street that your address is, so we ran into this a lot at the university area, where it would get sometimes on a cross street, so our routes are based on weight, that's how we build routes, trucks can only haul 52,000 pounds, anything over that, then our drivers are subject to DOT fines. So what was difficult about this, the corner houses, is some days it would go on this street, and some days it would go on others, and it was causing pretty sizable weight differentials for our trucks, so we just decided that for ease of operations, and to keep our truck weights in line, we want them on, in one certain location every week, so, and when we first did it, there was, there was a few kerfuffles, but it's pretty much kind of tamed down now, so, it was an inconvenience for some homeowners, because, you know, your garage may be around the back, and you can just pull it straight out to the street, but instead you got to pull it out to this one, so.
Council President Chiedem, and then Lyric?
But I understand you have made some arrangements with some folks who are non-resident rentals, there is the ability to discuss that?
There is, and when we do have those discussions, what we can do is, we say, that's an exception we can allow, but you need to keep it on this street, so that our weights can stay.
So it's a consistent placement?
That's what we're after, is just consistency, and we felt this was kind of the easiest way to guarantee that consistency.
And I wanted to comment on a similar thing, I, I'm actually one of the people that was affected by that, I have a long way to go to my, to the front house, of my house, where the address actually is, so, thank you for helping me get my steps in, but I have a neighbor who's elderly...
I'm in the HR department too.
What's that?
I'm in the HR department too.
But I have an elderly neighbor who's also on a corner house, who was very concerned about not having the ability to, you know, get her cart onto the side street, because it was a, a long way around, or on the front of her house, anyway, and so I appreciate that you're willing to work with people that are not able to do it, so.
Yeah, and another service that we provide as well, is for elderly people, we can do special stops, where the driver will get out and actually bring the can out, and dump it for people that are immobile.
That's nice to know, that if people have any struggle, that, that you're willing to work with them on it, so.
Absolutely, yeah. The second part of this is, we require a notarized waiver for entrance onto property, like I said, these trucks are very heavy, so whenever, for instance, when we deliver a roll-off container, which are the really big ones, the constructions, homeowners can rent those as well, and if they want them in the driveway, if somebody's doing their own roof or something like that, they want us to put it in the driveway as close to the house possible, we make them sign a waiver, so that if the driveway gets broken, or, you know, they drive over the gas, the grass on accident, because it's a tight, that it just helps, it defends the city in that, so, and we're already doing that, so. All right, 080, this is where we talk about what Council President Chiedem brought up, so, what we're doing there is, if someone is doing a job, let's just use a roofer, for example, let's say, if you hire a roofer, and he has his own demo trailer that he pulls in next to the house, as long as the owner is the person hauling it, and it's not in the right-of-way, then it's, it's allowed.
The owner of the house, or the owner of the business?
The contractor.
The contractor, or his representative?
Yeah.
His or her representative?
Where it gets tricky is when you have commercials dropping off and picking up, a lot of times the commercials don't want to go on private property, so they'll set it in the right-of-way, and we don't, we don't allow any of that in the right-of-way. One of the big examples of that is, there's a flood restoration company in town that has a fairly large container that is, they own it, and when they show up to a house, they put it right in the front door, and they load it up, and they haul it themselves, and we allow that, so. All right, um, okay, 090, this one was another kerfuffle that we had, we used to allow different, this is a diff, hard one to explain, so, if you live in a little housing clump, there was allowed in the past that all of the property owners could get together and just get a three-yard container that they all shared, instead of having individual carts. We were, we want to, or we're going to get away from doing that, we've kind of pushed that this way, the only way that we allow that is if all of, if you have multiple units that's all owned by one person, then you can say, I'd rather have a three-yard container instead of carts. What happened on this is, there's a, I think it was five houses in this little area that were sharing a three-yard container, and they all started to fight about it, and so they wanted us to mediate their arguments of who should pay for what, and I don't put as much as he does in, and he puts in more, and so it, it was actually pretty entertaining, so we just want to get away from that, we don't want to get into civil problems and disputes, so, I don't want to work for the police department, I'd rather stick in legal.
And HR.
And HR. Awesome, okay, section, subsection H, we talk about special pickup charges, this is particularly bad on our commercial accounts, so I think we've all seen it, there's a three-yard container somewhere, and there's 10 feet of stuff stacked on top of it, that becomes a danger for our, our guys dumping those, because they have to get out and manhandle that, we're going towards front-load containers, so now there's only one guy in a truck trying to manhandle that, and so we've come to the conclusion that we're just going to start charging a special pickup for that, so it'll basically be two dumps instead of one. What we encourage them is, if you're using that much trash, you need another, another container. The bad part about this is, the wind gets a hold of that stuff sticking out, and it just blows all over, and... We're almost done, I think this is the... We're almost done. I think this is the, the last section, point two three zero. It talks about giving us the authorization to do credits and charge adjustments, which is something that we're already doing by our policy. We just wanted to memorialize that. That's what Carrie does pretty much all day. So do you have anything you want to add on that?
No, it's just standard.
Okay, that's all we've got on that. We're looking to bring this to you folks October 5th, if, unless there's any things that you have questions about or concerns.
Council President Cheetham.
I don't have a concern. I want to compliment the sanitation department. Every spring, my wife orders a three-yard dumpster and she fills it full of yard debris and tree branches and dead flowers. And I mean, we fill that sucker up sometimes twice. And it is so easy. You order it, the next day it's there. When you're ready, they come and dump it. If they need to bring it back, it's done in one day. So easy. We just had an experience with a private contractor. My wife's the executor of an estate of a relative who recently passed north of Idaho Falls and they use a private contractor. It can't happen up there with a private contractor. If it's not on a Thursday, they will not make a delivery of a, of an empty container. They will not pick up a full one. They will not drive on your property at that site unless it's a Thursday. It's the most unaccommodating service like this I have ever seen. And she recently made the remark about how incredible it is the way Pocatello Sanitation Department takes care of our people. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We have an amazing staff, so.
Councilmember Nichols.
So what's the turnaround time on say a three-yard bin? You call in, you say it's full. How long does it take to get it dumped?
Um, our policy right now is if you call before noon, it'll be dumped the same day.
Wow, okay. So no reason for it to be filled way over the top? Got it.
And if it's afternoon, it's first thing in the morning?
Yes, next day.
Great, thank you.
We've never had it take more than 24 hours ever.
Yeah, we strive very hard on that. We, you know, our sanitation department adds or has a lot of services that most haulers don't have. You know, we have compost, we have curbside recycling, we have glass recycling, we have partners in pride containers where we can drop a container off for free for cleaning up neighborhoods. So I think we have a pretty good thing going here that not a lot of other waste hauling companies participate in.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move to agenda item eight, proposed South Fifth Corridor Annexation. Staff members from the Engineering Department and Planning and Development Services Department will be in attendance to present information regarding a proposed city-initiated annexation along the South Fifth Corridor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking the time to meet with us. Merrill Coell, Public Works Engineer, City of Pocatello, and Jim Englesee with the Long Range Planner in the Planning Department. Today, we're here to discuss something we've been talking about for a while now. We're to a point to get your advice. And I'll back up because it's echoing in my ears now or something. So what we have here, and if you see in your packet, the maps that we put in together and that. And I'd like to also, you know, thank Ryan Howerton and Allison Redmal that has put these maps together and what they can do for us and that as staff. So the red, if you're seeing the red on there, is areas that we've indicated that have either signed a, an agreement with the City of Pocatello or has also hooked up to a utility, water or sewer it is being served currently. And then under state law, the section 5222, under the annexation, areas there that they've already kind of given the consent, consent to be annexed if they are being served by that city utility. So the reason, and the area that we're talking about is, I know most of you know, it's between the Fifth Street exit and out by Caterpillar at the Porton Affixit there. And, and we have sewer currently all the way out to Century High School. And the Caterpillar is on pumps and they pump in to that sewer and then then it's a pressure line part of the way in, almost to where it's Castle Metis Road there. And then from there, it's gravity the rest of the way in town until it hits the other lift stations and then taken out to the plant. The reason for this is twofold. One is that having this many septic tanks in our area in an aquifer that's already been identified as high nitrates and so forth, is trying to make sure that we can get some of that sewage and that and taking it out to the plant and get it treated and not allowing more septic tanks and so forth out there. The other part is, is to have the city standard development along this corridor. We think this is a gem that we need to start really looking at. And people are starting to ask a lot of questions on and, and so forth as development is concerned. And in doing this, it, right now it's fallen into the county standards, which they don't typically do cities and so forth. So with that, I can tell you that we've had contact with the County Planning Department and has discussed a few things with them. They are excited to see this come into the city and use our city limits and our standards there, along that corridor. And there's other reasons why too, I'm sure, but is there. Also, this is part and is identified in our comprehensive plan of the City of Pocatello for this area and what we're doing. And, and for the development to go in through there. So what we're kind of looking at for today is, again, to let a public meeting, let you know what our thoughts are as staff moving forward, let the community know what we're doing. We have talked to some of these neighbors and some of the people out there. The blue are the ones we've identified that we've kind of talked to a little few of them. Others we need to go talk to if they are willing. I can tell you that there is some of the blue that are excited. They are developments that they're starting to talk to the county on and they want to be within the city. They want city services and I've talked with them also there. So some of the blue would be red. And then trying to, it's right now, it's going to weave in and out for the continuity and continue, you know, for the boundaries of the city and the new sewer, new city boundaries that would come in and so forth there. So there's a little bit of work there. There are some property owners that are going to be diehard, you know, they do not want to be within the city limits and, and we can work around that, especially in the annexation ordinances where they're over five acres. They have other rights where the under five acres do, so. That's kind of the overview. Now we can open up to some questions.
So I have a question by Councilmember Mansfield, Nichols, Lyric, then Cheetham.
What, what does the process look like? So let's say it's a landowner under five acres who's not yet connected to services. They're on septic. What, what are the, I guess, the property rights of those landowners? Because, you know, I'm looking at this blue area, for example, and I'm not so, super familiar with the parcels. But if there was just a, a single individual resident with a half acre lot right in the middle, but everyone else around them chooses to annex, what happens there?
They would be automatically under state law and everything has the ability that they're automatically annexed in.
And what's the process that we have to follow as we go about this? Like, what, yeah, what does that step, those steps look like?
Those steps are as, and I'm going by memory. I haven't, I should have read that whole code of 22 there before. But they have two different, they have three different categories of annexation, I believe is what it is. They have the A, the B, and the C.
Okay.
So in the different annexations, they give you exactly what you're saying and spell out. Hey, if, if they have an enclave or whatever is what you're saying is they're surrounded that way. They're under five acres and everything. They are notified and of course, communication and everything out of respect and all that stuff anyway. And then they are annexed in with the annex processes with the other. If they're over five acres, then they can kind of stay in that open area unless we want to proceed and, you know, signatures of 50% or more of the people around and, and some other things like that. There's, there's the different areas there. And I could get you a copy of that to read. Like I said, I'm paraphrasing for what I, little bit I can remember and I should have read it beforehand, so.
If I remember right, statute, when you hit five acres, changes from it.
Yeah.
That's kind of the line it changes on.
You can even send me just the link where I could go find it myself.
I'll send you that link or there's, it is the Idaho statutes there of 50 dash two two two.
Okay.
Right there is, is that if you go on there and it tells you the different categories and what, what the processes are.
If I may with a couple of follows.
Sure.
How many households are we talking about in this area? Households, apartments?
Okay, I'm not sure. Household apartments. I went on parcels.
Okay.
And that. So roughly in the red, like I said, I just kind of counted because some owners own some others and that. We have around 35 parcels in that area. In the blue, there's about 20, roughly 20 parcels there. And now that is only counted from Castle Metis Road into town. The other part, we've been in contact and as you can see down south, Castle Metis Road, there's not as many colors there that are outside the city limits. However, we are in contact with a few of those. And in fact, Castle Metis were, was here a couple of meetings ago. And they are interested in looking at some annexation here in the future on their properties.
Given the number of parcels and how that would correlate to households and people, do we have any concerns on things like sanitation or emergency services?
Yes, that, that's a good question. Yeah, that's always got to be taken into account and everything. And if we can get this ahead of this, for instance, sanitation and water sewer, we are getting ready to start into our rate studies and that so that we can have these areas involved to be able to analyze those and see what the needs are. And then through emergency services, we believe, or I should say, we as me, believe that this is going to be helpful for emergency services. And one aspect is that right now it is confusing. You go out there with fire, police and that, I mean, in the county, I mean, the city, because we jog in, out, in, out, in, out as you go down through there. And I, I think that can be kind of confusing and stuff in the jurisdictions there. So this way, if we can get that whole corridor down through there, it, it'll help alleviate that confusion.
Great. All my questions.
Okay, Councilmember Nichols.
Hi, Merrill. So you're still working on like an annexation parcel or boundary map? That's in flux right now? Is that right?
Uh, this is, yeah, on this end of town, we have it across the area of the city. But this area right here, yeah, in here, this is, this is kind of what we've identified. We've got the files and everything there. So yeah, we're, we're not in flux. We're just asking for the councils, you know, do we want to, do you want to proceed in this way? Is, is kind of the endpoint that we're trying to get to today and to let you know.
And generally, you're looking at the blue and the red?
Or, or those, the, some of the ones, for instance, there's, if you look this area right here, there's a section that doesn't have anything in it. It's no color in there.
Okay.
Basically what I do on a couple of those, I have an agreement that's already been signed on those areas that I've had for about five or six years. I never went and recorded those there. They're in the file because they pulled their development within the county. So they really didn't hook up, but they're still looking at some development in those areas and that. So I asked for those areas not to be colored so that I could keep track of where I was with the agreements and with the folders we have in the files is what the colors mean, so.
Okay, thank you. Linda?
I do have a question, but first I wanted to just say I'm, I'm very in favor of proceeding with this project for the, the reasons that you have mentioned. But one in particular is this can have a direct impact on our water and protecting our water. So I think that's incredibly important. But you kind of answered part of my question, I guess, with Councilmember Mansfield's question about if you have like one lone, lone holdout in an area where everyone else has agreed to get on board, that the law says we can just automatically include that person. But earlier in the presentation, you said something about that, that there's some workarounds. There's ways we can work around people that don't. And I was wondering if you could say a little bit more on what you meant by that other than the situation that you've already addressed? Are there other ways that you work around people that don't want to participate?
That don't want to participate? First I'll clarify that I am still trying to learn English. And, and some things come out of my mouth that is not what, there. But the workaround, I, I'm, in the back of my mind, there's a couple of property owners that own quite a bit of properties there. And what I was meaning by the workaround is, I believe in that part is when I was describing the continuity of the city boundaries to the new annexation boundaries, that we, there's other ways of working around for, to get to that continuity that we wouldn't need those properties if they were a holdout, then over five acres. There's other ways and other property owners that is willing to be annexed in at this time that we would just annex around them.
Okay.
Is what I was, I, I believe that's what I was trying to get to at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Council President Cheetham and then we've got Councilmember Marchand.
Two issues. One, could you give me some orientation as I drive down South Fifth? Where is this first red finger pointing gun?
This one right here.
Yeah.
That right there is the Rocky Nar trailer park. It's right past South Valley Road. Probably less than, probably 200 yards.
Next to the old Sunset Drive.
Right next to the old Sunset Drive, yes.
Okay, what's the other end?
This red right here.
No, further down, all the way to the bottom.
All the way down here.
Yeah.
Or here, here's, this right here, this little square right here is the LDS Seminary. A little square, the, the actual square. As you move up here to, towards Castle Metis Road and there.
Okay, which one is Castle Metis Road on your map?
Castle Metis is this one right here between these, the main yellow and, and the yellow here.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Which.
Okay, second thing.
Yellow is wrong.
You know, one of the things, this, this checkerboard pattern was discussed last week in the PDA meeting.
Yes.
And there has been some discussion of some things that might be happening down on South Fifth, which I'm very much in favor of. I think that's, that's where we need an industrial commercial base for our community. So I'm very much in favor of this happening. And I think, you know, whatever we can do to get more of the landowners involved in this project, in this mass annexation, it's a good thing. How many acres overall are we talking?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I did not, that's a question I should have anticipated. I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marchand.
I'm, I'm also in favor of this, but what I would say is it's bigger than just annexation.
We talked about it. The law enforcement end of this thing is it going to be brutal
and you're going to have to have more policemen.
Yes.
Right? Because part of it is, is you're going to take the jail in. And when the jail was in Pocatello, the City of Pocatello Police Department responded to every call there. And that's what's going to happen there. Everybody that walks through that door, they, they call the city. So you end up sending a policeman there. Also, there's some tough spots, I guess, is how I'll describe them out there, right? So it also becomes bigger than law enforcement. It's going to tie law enforcement up a lot more there. That's a fact. The other part of it is cleaning it up, right? The, the, we struggle with that in town right now and now we're going to pick that up and it is not very pretty. As you drive down South Fifth, there's, there's nothing pretty. Sanitation, sewer, water, all brings in income from that. But other, there are other things that are going to cost us money. And I guess, I'm not saying we're looking away from it. I'm just saying that's something we need to keep in the back of our minds. How much more is it going to cost us? And, and so as, as you go through this, I guess, I would ask that you talk to the fire chief, right? Because now we're going to have, if they turn it into industrial, right? I think that takes probably different.
Correct.
Kinds of trucks, people, those. Kinds of trucks, people, those things, law enforcement, I think all the, all these, all the department heads need to be involved in, this is what we're trying to do, this is what we're, why we're trying to do it. Can, can you, as the experts, tell us what it's going to cost, right? How much more is it going to cost us if, when we bring, when we bring this in versus how much, you know, maybe what you're going to bring in on taxes? Certainly going to bring the tax base up, but does it bring it up enough to cover what we need to do to do the right things for services?
Right. If we get called to the jail every time, why don't we just leave the jail as county and not annex it?
Well, I'm just saying, and I, I mean, this is a, this is experience from a long time ago, right? So when they walk in the door, and it's pretty tough, when you would go to Center Street, you have three deputies sitting there and you're taking a call because the person walked in the door there and said, hey, I want to report this. Well, you're in the city, so I'm not, maybe that'll change. I mean, you have a, a whole different.
But, but at the end of the day, you get no tax value out of the jail, it's, it's a county facility and we send a lot of resources there. To me, it makes sense to leave it county.
And, and maybe you come to an agreement with them, I don't know, I just, you, it's tough when you're tying up policemen in a law enforcement building, right? When that's, because that's going to become different beats, they're going to, I'm sure they'll rearrange.
Sure.
Been out of it for a long time, but I know that, that end of town is, would be call heavy for the police department. I mean, and you, it's just tough because of what sits out there, right? The number of people jammed into tight spaces creates law enforcement types calls, so.
Sure. Okay, and then I've got Linda and then Rick.
I'm just curious about timeframe, like based on all of the discussion we're having and all of the pieces and parts and things that are in process and things you need, still need to work out. When do you, do you have an idea of when you might come to us and actually have a proposal for annexation that we would vote on?
I think we could, this, my thoughts and Jim can answer on the planning side, but if we get the okay and that, we'd like to start putting together letters and that to, to notify the properties and even the ones that are in blue that if they're interested in, this is what we're going to be doing to bring that in. I'm going to say that's probably going to be in and out of 60 days. I would, I would hope that we'd have something early spring to where that we could annex, start going through an annexation because we're going to have a lot of legal descriptions and everything else to try to put together and put in, a lot of littler parcels and stuff to try to do that. So we're probably within the next six months, unfortunately.
Yeah, I haven't heard anybody say they're against it, I've heard everybody say we're in favor of it and so I think, I'm here and sent the letters out and move forward with it.
Done before January 1.
Before January 1.
Yeah.
I would like to add one thing and, and Councilman Marshand is correct in, in, with the fire, I know for sure because we have to, I, once we annex, we notify the fire and stuff too and where we are. One of the things that I do know that's happened is with the PDA is that they are, we are getting a contract to look at this area down through here and possible TIFs and at least getting the studies together and that so that we have the information and the data to start making some decisions that direction and everything and in making this maybe a light industrial commercial zones and stuff too that kind of offsets the taxes. By what I mean by that is they actually pay a bulk of the taxes where residential doesn't pay for the services that, that we have here in town with the taxes they bring in, so just for that.
Okay, we've got Council President Cheatham has a.
There's a, a couple of very small pieces in the middle of this that are light pink. What are those? I don't see it in your.
Pink.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In your coloration.
The red.
Yeah.
These light pink ones?
Yeah.
That is white roofs under red.
[laughing] I think that's the jail right there.
Well, I would agree with, with the mayor that we should exclude any property owned by Manette County.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're talking of moving their forensics lab, it's not going to be at ISU anymore, it's going to be in back of the jail.
Yes.
And I think we need to leave that area alone and let them do their own thing there.
Okay, I've had discussions a little bit there and so that will be something that the council and the commissioners will need to work through because I know they were excited with like the foren, possible forensics with, with the water, roadways and everything back behind and stuff and some of the plans. So I know that there, there's going to be some discussions along, at least between the two jurisdictions for sure.
Let them bring their own water and roads.
Well, they can do that, they can do that, be fine with it. But we'll, if we need to have those discussions, we can have those discussions pretty easily. Any other questions, council? It sounds to me like move forward with letters, let's move this forward and, and bring it as quickly as we can. All right, thank you. Then we will move to agenda item nine is city initiated text amendment to Title 17 zoning regulations. Planning and Development Services staff members or member will be in attendance to discuss the proposed updates to Pocatello City Code Title 17 zoning regulations. I'm guessing you're the member.
I'm the member.
This, three or four times you've been up here today. Number three.
Hopefully the last.
Star on the show.
Jim Englesey, long range planner for the City of Pocatello. So we have before you some city initiated text amendments. As you may be aware, we, we try and regularly come to you with updates to improve our zoning ordinance as it sits with the hope that soon we can rewrite the whole thing. But as we currently sit now, in order to make it work better with things that we've run into each day as well as upcoming changes or changes in the comprehensive plan, this is what you'll be seeing and hear. And so if I'm, if I may, I'm going to go through the summary of proposed amendments and as you have questions, if you have any questions in each section, we can address them as we go through them. So to start, we're proposing amendment to the plan designations and zoning districts permitted to align with comprehensive plan 2040. This is part of where we adopted the future land use map, bringing that to consistency with the Title 17. Any questions on that? Moving forward in our definitions, we're looking to amend the disturbed area definition to clarify what is considered natural versus disturbed slopes. Add definition for front building facade to clarify standards for building orientation, drive-throughs and parking locations. Add definition for front yard area to clarify landscaping requirements. Add definition for premature alterations to clarify review items for the Historic Preservation Commission. And add definition for principal entrance to clarify building orientation.
I got one there. That front yard area, if you have a, a, a building and it, it is a given distance from the street and a given width, but it has side pieces, does that count as front yard?
That is front yard.
Do sides pieces count as front yard also, the area of those?
Anything between the front of the building, essentially the, the foundation wall to their front property line is the front yard area.
But what if there are pieces, my yard's a good example, I mean, the building doesn't set edge to edge, so there are pieces of yard on each side. Do those count as part of the front yard?
So anything from the, so you have the front foundation of the building, anything behind that, like on your side yard, would not account as front yard area.
Okay.
Any other questions? Administrative provisions, we're looking to amend language that determines what qualifies as a legal non-conforming lot. Amend language to include signage that qualifies as legal non-conforming structures. Remove the variance process as a means to expand a legal non-conforming structure and replace with a conditional use permit process. Add standards for expanding, rebuilding and repairing legal non-conforming structures. Remove variance application review criteria for legal non-conforming structures. Add language to clarify standards for repair and reconstruction of structures housing illegal non-conforming use. Remove criteria for non-conforming use expansion or change to meet general criteria of the conditional use permit. Remove proportionate compliance and replace with required improvements and add withholdings to address violations. Questions?
We have a question here, Councilmember Marshand. Or no, Mansfield. Marshand's over there.
Why didn't we put the three M's on the same side?
I don't know, it's a great question.
I, I had reviewed the, the standards for expanding, rebuilding and repairing the legal non-conforming structures. For example, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looked like if, if it's destroyed in a fire, for example, they have a certain time window of when they must initiate repairs, how long those repairs must take and that it must stay within the same amount of space that would be considered non-conforming, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So tell me, how is this a little bit different than, I think back to the sign, when we talked about the sign code, that obviously signs that are no longer in compliance with the ordinance are grandfathered in, but when those renovations are, are required, we are able then to require them to come into conformance. Why do we not do that in this instance? If, if the case, house burns down or a, a structure burns down, why do we not require it to come into compliance? Why do we give any sort of an exception for them to rebuild it not conforming?
Good question. And I can get you a better answer later.
Okay.
But right now I'll, I'll table that.
Okay, thank you.
Back to you on that.
Oh.
We have a, we have a help coming up.
Phone friend is coming in.
Brent McLean, Planning and Community Services Director. One aspect to look at in regards to your question is you're dealing with a structure that houses some sort of, of occupancy versus a sign which doesn't.
Sure.
And the value associated with those things. There's legal issues when you're, when you're removing someone from a home that maybe potentially can't comply with the zoning regulations. Lots of times these structures are located on lots that, that to rebuild on those lots would be very difficult. And so you're allowing someone to regain their loss of property based off of a disaster. A sign, lots of times you're requiring them to come into compliance because they're voluntarily choosing to change.
Sure.
It's not like the sign burned down.
Okay.
And, and that is a significant difference in, in what we would be looking at, that, you know, it's a voluntary compliance versus, you know, a, a response to some act of God.
If I may with follow-up. Assuming I have a small corner lot downtown, right? I am not in compliance on setback distances, house burns down, I want to rebuild that house and, and I, and recognizing that the setback is probably never going to be accomplished for me to build on that property, is, for, first off, was I required to get a variance or some sort of an approval to be exclu, like because I am not within those?
No, so the non-conforming happens because code has changed.
Okay.
And made you non-compliant.
If, so then in my question would be, does this code or this, this, yeah, the zoning ordinance rewrite require me to receive approval in order? Because I, I completely understand what you're saying and agree that that, that that's a, I think, I think people should have the opportunity to use those lots rebuild and, and I want people to have their housing situation to be rectified, especially in the case of that disaster. Are they required to come for approval if?
Yeah, they would have to go through the same building permit process that anyone else would have to go through. And in that process, we would determine if it's a, an actual established non-conforming use or, or property and, and at that point, we can then assess what is those parameters that they can, can reconstruct that home or that building in.
And so this ordinance still allows us to define what those criteria are that they're allowed to, if we're going to allow them to return to legal non-conforming status, we can clearly define what those.
Yeah, and so what we would have to do is look at the historical records of that property itself because each property, property will be very unique to itself.
Sure.
And, and we have, we'll have to determine what that, that requirement would be, what those standards would be.
And then those are tied to the building permit.
Yeah. And the other thing to, to, to understand too, in relation to this portion of the code, insurance companies won't insure a home if they're in a jurisdiction that does not allow for the rebuilding of non-conforming structures. They won't insure those properties.
Okay, thank you, that was helpful.
Thanks, Brent. Any other questions on administrative provisions? Okay. The conditional use permit section, looking to amend language to allow for two years to establish use instead of one. Amend language to allow for a one-year extension instead of six months and remove 30-day requirement to request a, a conditional use permit extension. Questions? For variances, amend language to allow two years to establish requested variance instead of one and remove a 30-day requirement to request a variance extension. Decision-making procedures, add provisions in the hearing matrix and notification procedures to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process, which I'll get to here in a little bit. And appeals, amend language to include the Historic Preservation Commission decisions. The use table, amend the table to reflect the proper use of restricted uses and permitted uses. Currently there are some that are shown as permitted but have a restriction in the notes and so we're just making that correction. Allow college uses to be permitted outright in commercial zones and office parks. Allow emergency services to be permitted outright in all zones. Allow religious institutions to be permitted outright in all residential and commercial zones. Allow schools to be permitted outright in commercial zones. And clarify community recreation use approval process in residential zones. Any questions? The dimensional standards table, remove redundant setback requirements, we have a couple in there that are just repeated and so we're removing those. The historic preservation overlay, add a table outlining what items require a certificate of appropriateness as well as commission review, staff review, or require no certificate of appropriateness. Amend application process to reflect proposed application or certificate of appropriateness process. Remove section outlining standards for review and reference the historic district design standards for standards review, review standards. Remove demolition procedures to reflect proposed certificate of appropriateness process and add language requiring historic buildings to meet the provisions of the IABC to, in relating to their repair, alteration, relocation and change of occupancy. The original town site overlay, amend setback requirements for non-residential uses to include a minimum of zero feet and maximum of 10 feet. In addition to parking areas, require traffic circulation and drive-throughs to not be located between front building facade and the front lot line. And add language codifying street light standards as identified in the downtown development plan.
Jim, can you go back to that facade thing? Could you say it one more time?
In addition to parking areas, require traffic circulation to drive-throughs to not be located between front building facade and the front lot line.
How, how is that? Can you give me an example?
So currently we don't allow parking areas in between the front of the building and the street on new development in our original town site. Now you, you have some of that there, but this is, this is to help in the downtown development, a lot of what you see is buildings right up to the street and we want to protect that form. And so in new development, not allowing, we're already not allowing parking areas in that, between the building and the street, but also this would be saying to not allow drive-throughs, the, the same thing, to not be between the, the front. drive-throughs, the, the same thing, to not be between the, the front building and the street.
Has that been a problem anywhere?
There have been a couple new developments that, that were allowed to do that. And typically you see that type of development, like in a Yellowstone type of building form. But in order to protect the, the downtown development form, we want to restrict that type of development. Now, you can still have a drive-through, it would just have to be located somewhere else rather than the front of the building.
Okay, Jim, we've got a question by Councilmember Nichols and then Councilmember Lurick.
Hi, Jim. Hey, I'd like to bounce back up to the historic preservation overlay, last bullet point. So we're adding language requiring historic buildings to meet the provisions of the International Existing Building Code, et cetera, et cetera. What standard are they currently held to? Are we changing that?
From what, I'm not a building official at all, but I, I, what I believe is that they have that it's an opt-in. And there, there are provisions to, to help in, I believe, accessibility and fire codes and all of that. When we, you know, remodeling a historic building, to provide flexibility because they weren't built to today's building code standards, this allows for some flexibility in the building code. And this is just, so this is just memorializing that, that ability, that they can come into compliance with that optional code.
In that existing building code. Language, okay, got it, thank you.
Councilwoman Lurick?
We have a similar type of question, but back to the original town site overlay, the first thing about setback requirements. What, what is it, what is required currently? What are we changing from?
So let me just pull that up so I can give you the right. Currently, we, it's a minimum, so a minimum of zero feet, but we want to have, we want to provide a maximum so they can't go, they can't build their building all the way to the back of the lot. It's a, it's, it's a minimum of zero and a maximum of 10 for the setback.
So the minimum is staying the same, we're just adding a maximum.
Correct.
So am I, maybe this is a really dumb question, but I'm understanding minimum of zero means they can build right at the back of it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
That would, that would give you the, the built form of downtown, right?
Right.
Up to the sidewalk.
Where they are, right.
Would give you the ability, like if you're a restaurant, you want to have outdoor seating, that would give you the flexibility, but it wouldn't be able to say you're going to have your building all the way to the back of the lot. So it maintains that, that downtown development form.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next is slope development standards, amend the slope analysis to allow for previously disturbed slopes to be excluded from disturbance calculations. We currently do this as a policy, is if they can prove that it's already been disturbed, that it can be removed from the calculations, but this is memorializing that they wouldn't be held to that if they could prove it. Next, street frontage and setback area landscaping, amend minimum landscaping requirements to be broken down into different residential development types and amend language to ensure consistency. Questions? Residential development standards, add requirement for townhome development landscaping, amend off-street parking requirements for properties with alley access outside of the O T O and amend section formatting.
What is O T O?
Original town site overlay.
Okay.
And then last, home occupations, allow for retail sales and home occupations that meet all of their standards within the home occupation. Any questions on any of that?
I, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There was something in here, and I, I've been trying to find, I didn't write it down and I should have, it talked about minimum vegetation. And I am very concerned about water usage. Based on, again, that meeting that was held here yesterday, cities came under the gun, under the discussion of water usage in the East Snake Plain Aquifer. Even though what I've heard is cities use three to 4% of the water, we're on the target list of this management plan for the water and the way we use it. So I am very concerned that we're over-requiring vegetation that's going to consume a lot of water and restrict our potential for development. There was discussion about the Snake Plain Aquifer restricting development, new subdivisions in cities and having the legislative authority to do that. So that, that brings me much concern that we're over-requiring trees and grass.
Currently in our code, we, we recommend native and water-wise landscaping, we don't require it. And that may be something that we want to look at more, that we are more serious about that to reduce our water. But on the, so on the other hand, it's trying to find that fine line between are we gonna, are we gonna have all rock scape and pavement? Or are we gonna have, you know, some type of, of landscaping? Because on one side, you have issues with, with urban heat island effect and heating up and causing other problems versus having too much landscaping and, and using too much water. And so I think that's something that we can look at. I believe having the minimum landscaping requirements of trees is, is good and not having a, you know, saying that you have to have a high-water type of landscaping like Kentucky bluegrass, for example.
Yeah, we, we don't require grass.
Right.
That's not a requirement. We do require trees, which actually help preserve water because they reduce the temperature of our city, which in turn helps preserve the water we have within our city limits.
I was at a water meeting, it seemed like a lot of water meetings like that, I was in one in Boise about a month or so ago, and there's development in western Idaho, which when they build new homes, they're putting in turf. They're not putting in grass and the homeowners are loving that. It costs a little more upfront, but not much when you consider the seating and the watering systems. They're putting in turf and the, the new homeowners are loving them. And it's reducing their water consumption by over half in the average household. And they've got 8,000 homes going in this new subdivision over there.
It's, it's very much a cultural thing, too.
Yeah.
And I think there, the shift to stuff, that type of product, a turf or something like that is, is very much a cultural acceptance and people being on board with that. But there are other options, and we don't require that, that grass goes in, but we can look at other water-wise policies to implement as we move forward.
Well, if, if, if a developer came to us with a subdivision proposed like that, would it be allowed under existing code if they wanted to put turf in instead of grass?
Yeah, absolutely.
Plastic trees instead of real trees?
Never heard of plastic trees.
Palm trees, I mean, you know, they're in every doctor's office in town.
I, I think the tree, the tree thing our code might not allow for that, but, but the grass for sure.
Would, i- if, if a developer came to us, could that be a variant allowed?
Potentially, we, it's something we could potentially look at.
What, are you talking plastic trees or, or the?
All of it.
The.
I would mean, they, they said people are thrilled in doing this because they don't have to buy a lawnmower, they don't have to hire a lawn service, and every 15 years they replace their turf and move on with it with life.
Well, that's what they're saying now. We'll wait for 15 years to see if that's the case then.
Well, they've got 8,000 homes there now.
No, I don't, I don't argue that. We've got a home over here off of the, I think it's Hyde Street that has turf.
Oh, I wish I did.
Go for it, Rick.
I gotta fight with my wife first.
That's, yeah.
That's the cultural part.
They're just creating fights, or maybe they're stopping fights over there, who knows? Linda?
I'm really glad that you clarified that we don't require glass. I have a, a sort of bad memory of when I first started on the council of a, a big fight with a homeowner who didn't want to have grass and basically launched a whole campaign on social media about how awful we were for requiring them to have grass. So vegetation, people make assumptions about what that means, and those are not always correct assumptions. So we do not require that. But I also want to go back to Jim's point that there is a balance here. Too much, you know, sort of hardscape landscapes are also, can be detrimental and not had, you know, are not necessarily good. We need shade from trees, we need absorption in some cases of water with certain types of landscapes. So I'm all for encouraging, you know, water-smart plants or types of species that don't use a lot of water, but also we have to have that balance between hard surface and, and vegetation. It can, we can be smart about what types of vegetation and maybe encourage that in the code, but the removal of all of it has detrimental effects as well.
I, I might clarify just a little bit, that fight with the no grass thing was she had a beautiful lawn and then she didn't want to mow it and.
Yes.
It turned into weeds, it wasn't going into vegetation, and we said, no, you can't have weeds that grow six feet tall.
Yes.
You have to have actual vegetation or.
She claimed letting her grass grow was turning it to natural grass.
I have natural stuff behind my house too, but I wouldn't call it usable space, so it's a little different, but, no, that's good. Any other questions, counsel? Super, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we will move to agenda item 10. Now, counsel, I just want to clarify something for you on this. This meeting is not a meeting that I would look for any kind of a resolution to show up unless there was a circumstance that we needed it. I'm not interested in all of these things where we actually do real business. I like to do it when the public recognizes, we're typically doing that, and that's Thursday evening meetings. However, this resolution that we've got here that we'll get to in just a minute, we did not realize we needed, but we need it as quickly as we possibly can because it is tied back to what we did last week, and so they needed, we needed to get the, the stuff to I T D and, and to the transportation department. We didn't realize we needed the resolution, they asked us to get this done as quickly as we possibly could, which would be this Thursday. And typically, I would not ask you to do any of this outside of the Thursday evening meetings, but this is one of those situations that we didn't have time or we don't have the opportunity to, to come back or to get that done and wait two weeks.
Mr. Mayor, does this need to be read or published?
No, it's just, would be a regular resolution that we've, that we would have done typically, and we don't typically read a resolution, we just, we just move forward with them. But with that, counsel, after that explanation, agenda item 10, resolution state agreement for Center Street Railroad Bridge underpass rehabilitation. Counsel may wish to adopt a resolution setting out terms and conditions for cost sharing and construction of the Center Street Railroad Bridge underpass. The city council approved the agreement with Idaho Transportation at the September 7, 2023 regular council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the resolution for the state agreement for Center Street Railroad Bridge underpass rehabilitation as outlined in agenda item number 10.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion, this is unreal. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mansfield, got you, everybody.
Yeah.
He bet everybody out there, he got him.
You say that.
No, I heard that, that was what I heard, maybe it's because it's coming out of here, it was.
That's right. I think your hearing in this ear maybe is a little weird.
I just wanted to remind him I could beat him at the game if I want in it.
My hearing might be bad on the left side, anyway. Thank you, Council President Cheatham and Councilmember Mansfield. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, and counsel, thank you for that. I apologize, I do not like to have something like that come into this meeting where we have to have some action, but I appreciate you indulging me on that one today, so thank you very much. And with that, thank you for attending tonight, or this, this morning, with that, we are adjourned. You said Mansfield, did you mean Mango?